Welcome everyone, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees on today, Monday, January 23rd to order. Do you have a roll call please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Goldberg.
Here.
Trustee Gould.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
And President Torpey.
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting had been posted to the press in accordance with the Own Public Meetings Act. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall, posted on our website, and is filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to ask everybody to stand and take a moment of silence before I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started, we have a couple announcements tonight due to a typographical error on the totter pickups. The pickup date for Zone 1 green totters during February will be on Tuesday, February 14th. If you have any questions about that, you can call the Public Works Department at (973) Village Hall offices and Village facilities will be closed on Monday, February 13th in observance of Lincoln's birthday. And the meeting that would be scheduled that night will be on Wednesday, February 15th at 7:30 PM here in Village Hall instead. There's a Board of Trustees workshop, a budget workshop scheduled February 8th at 7:30 here in Village Hall. And I also want to remind people that they can sign up for our alert system in town to receive real-time, up-to-date information on weather emergencies and things like that at southorange.org alert. The system isn't perfect yet, but it's better to be signed up than not. We've got a couple presentations this evening. The first is for the South Orange Rescue Squad and two of its outgoing members. So if the outgoing captain and president want to come up to the front of the room, and while they do, I just have a quick statement to read before we get into each of their individual awards. So they'll be standing for a minute while I possibly embarrass both of you just a tiny bit. So the reason why many people are here tonight, I think, is to honor these two local volunteers. But before we get into that, for those of you who aren't familiar, the South Orange is covered by this entirely volunteer and donation-funded Rescue Squad 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. During the weekday, although primary EMS responsibilities are with the paid ambulance company, volunteer members in South Orange on the Rescue Squad do respond to backup calls. And this basically means that a second 911 medical call has come in before the ambulance from the first call has dropped the person off at the hospital and cleared and is available. And just a quick side note and PSA for everybody watching and listening, if you see someone driving through town, or really anywhere, with a blue light flashing on their car, that means they are a volunteer who's been paid to respond to one of these backup calls. Volunteers in New Jersey don't have sirens. If you see one of these people, pull over immediately, let them pass. Delaying people responding to calls like that is literally delaying a volunteer who's trying to respond to a 911 medical call. Anyway, crew members, the Rescue Squad stay in the building overnight. They typically ride 12 or 24-hour shifts. And these volunteers are trained as emergency medical technicians, or they're going to go through that training. The EMTs of the Rescue Squad are also involved in the administration of the Rescue Squad, on the board of directors, marketing, fundraising, equipment maintenance, and sometimes, if we're lucky, even housekeeping. The squad has been around since 1952. It's operated by donations and grants and the energy of its volunteers. Some people step up to the challenge of extremely serious leadership. Both our outgoing captain, who's in charge of operations, and the president, who's in charge of administration and the board are prime examples of this. They've each put in close to what probably amounts to 10,000 hours of volunteerism, if not more, throughout their time at the squad. They each have directly saved the lives of people experiencing cardiac arrest. They've saved countless more by providing quick and professional transportation to the hospital, and made many peoples and families' nights of illness and injury much more manageable, knowing that they are in the hands of the Rescue Squad. Even in times of great stress, I've seen people breathe easier once they see the Rescue Squad walk in the door. The squad generally has pretty quick response time of around just 2 to 3 minutes, and works extremely close with our police department and fire department on fire scenes, motor vehicle accidents, and other incidents. EMTs are often on the front line along with the police, and going into people's homes often in the middle of the night and in the worst of weather conditions, and safely getting them to the hospital for advanced care. The EMTs do not take salaries, do not take tips, or any other form of compensation. They do it because they know they're making a difference and that their service is needed. And especially in a bad economy, it's great to know so many people are willing to spend 15 to 20 hours a week or more volunteering for their community. And if you want to learn a little more about the Rescue Squad, to volunteer or to support them, you can do so at southorangerescue-squad.org. But tonight, we're here specifically to honor two people. Don Boyle, the outgoing president, and Kurt Gibson, the outgoing captain, for their years of service. Kurt, I'll read your proclamation first. But first, not only is Kurt the outgoing captain of the Rescue Squad, he's also a dispatcher at our police department and works as a paid EMT. And as an EMT, actually won first place with fellow squad member Brian Teague as the best basic life support EMT team in the state of New Jersey in Atlantic's Medi-Games competition in 2010. So that's the kind of quality they have at the Rescue Squad. Whereas Kurt William Gibson, a resident of the township of South Orange Village, has shown the true meaning of volunteerism and concern for his fellow members by dedicating his time and energy as a member of the South Orange Rescue Squad for six years, from 2005 to present. And whereas Kurt worked countless and tireless hours to better the Rescue Squad, as he undertook many leadership roles, including First Lieutenant from 2008 to 2009, Captain from 2010 to 2011, and continues to serve as a member of the Board of Directors since 2005. Whereas Kurt became a life member of the Rescue Squad in 2007 after surpassing 1,000 emergency calls in just two years. Whereas Kurt's dedication, membership, guidance, and leadership have been a contributing factor to the organization of the Rescue Squad accomplishing such tasks as adding and staffing a third ambulance to the fleet, facilitating a captain's car for use as a first responder vehicle, and motivating a team of highly trained and responsive EMTs. And whereas Kurt has responded to over 2,500 emergency medical calls during his tenure at the South Orange Rescue Squad, volunteering thousands upon thousands of hours for his fellow community members, and directly saving the lives of two patients using cardiopulmonary resuscitation and defibrillation. And whereas only a select few group of people choose to volunteer their time to be awoken in the middle of the night to the sound of a pager, taken away from their families to answer emergency 911 medical calls, and endure the stresses associated with being an emergency responder. Whereas the Village President and the Board of Trustees do want to publicly express their appreciation to Kurt William Gibson for all of his time that he has given to the community of South Orange Village, to the Rescue Squad, and to our neighbors and community members. Now therefore be it proclaimed, I, Alex Torpey, Village President of the Township of South Orange Village, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of South Orange, do hereby extend sincere appreciation to Kurt William Gibson for his selfless and tireless dedication to the community of South Orange Village as an exemplary member of the South Orange Rescue Squad and a resident of South Orange. Congratulations. Now, Don, a longtime Maplewood resident, a friend and a mentor to many who have passed through the squad's doors, Don has done it all, from serving his country to serving his local community. And you can see the legacy he leaves all around us, for example, that both of his sons have been EMTs and crew chiefs at the Rescue Squad as well. Whereas Don Robert Boyle, a resident of the Township of Maplewood, has shown the true meaning of volunteerism and concern for his fellow members by dedicating his time and energy as a member of the South Orange Rescue Squad for eight years, from 2003 to 2011. And whereas Don worked countless and tireless hours to better the South Orange Rescue Squad, as he undertook many leadership roles, including First Lieutenant and Treasurer from 2005 to 2007, Captain from 2008 to 2009, and President from 2010 to 2011. And whereas Don became a life member of the Rescue Squad in four short years after joining by surpassing 1,000 emergency medical calls. Whereas Don's dedication, membership, guidance, and leadership have been a contributing factor of the organization of the Rescue Squad accomplishing such tasks as restructuring of the Rescue Squad's financial records, instrumental in the rewriting of the Rescue Squad's bylaws, computerization of the administration procedures, increase the overall membership, as well as the membership of trade EMTs. Whereas Don has personally responded to nearly 2,500 emergency medical calls on behalf of the South Orange Rescue Squad, volunteering thousands upon thousands of hours to keep people safe, in addition to directly saving the lives of four patients using cardiopulmonary resuscitation and defibrillation. And whereas only a select few group of people choose to volunteer their time to be awoken in the middle of the night to the sound of this pager, taken away from their families to answer emergency 911 medical calls and endure those stresses. Whereas the Village President and the Board of Trustees do want to publicly express their appreciation to Don R. Boyle for all of his time that he has given to the community of South Orange, to the South Orange Rescue Squad, to our neighbors and community members. Now therefore be it proclaimed, I, Alex Torpey, Village President of the Township of South Orange Village, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of South Orange, do hereby extend sincere appreciation to Don R. Boyle for his selfless and tireless dedication to the community of South Orange Village over the past eight years and as an exemplary member of the South Orange Rescue Squad and community member. Congratulations.
I always want to thank the trustees and the president for all the work you do.
the meeting, around 11 or 12 o'clock, if that's okay.
Want to welcome your new Village Administrator, who I guess is starting on Monday.
Yeah, if we're lucky.
Why are you letting these two leave anyway?
Also thank Robin for helping us with revised schedule this year.
That's right. We have a couple more presentations.
If you noticed, the last year and a half or so, when we've done our presentations, they've
If people who came for the ceremony would like to leave now, they're certainly welcome
been two or three months after the quarter that we finished.
to.
With Robin's help, we now are doing them like three weeks after each quarter is finished,
They can also stay a few more minutes if they like, and hear a little bit of an update from Sopac and Seton Hall.
so they'll be much, much more timely.
So up to you guys.
Some of this information you have seen a little bit in December, only because we did
The beep is just below.
What's that?
do a presentation in December, which was for the end of the past fiscal year, but it
The beep is just below.
Oh, did it?
No.
That's right. It's a good excuse. Michael, do you want to come up and start Sopac's presentation?
did include some of this information. So the sheet that I've turned to, this is reflecting our first half of this fiscal year, July 1 through December 31, 2011. For Sopac performances that we produced ourselves, we had 18 events, 22 total performances, performances for attendance of 5,768. For Sopac school time performances, these are where kids are bussed in at 10 AM and noon on a Friday or a Monday to see special shows in Sopac just for school students. We've had two different events for three performances. They were both in December for a total of 992 in attendance. Other events, which is Seton Hall and Theater Rentals, nine events, nine performances, 2,219 in attendance, for total attendance in the Sopac auditorium for 8,979. That does not include any rentals or special events that would be in the loft or any non-ticketed events. On the next page, and sorry for the formatting problem on this, I'll make that larger next time. When I arrived about a year and a half ago, one of the things that was brought up, I think by Trustee Levinson, was a loft series. Well, we kicked that off this year. Blues in the Loft actually was last night. It was acoustic blues. It was great. And we have five more loft series coming up between now and April. March and April is blues. Jazz is in February. This used to be at the Baird. March and April, you can find a listing of the exact artists on our website. These are up in the loft with a very low cover charts. I say cover charts, but very low ticket, $15 to perform cabaret style, and we have a cash bar available and snacks available. Some of the upcoming shows that Sopac's producing in the next few months between now and May are jazz with Jane Monhyte. She's a great vocalist in February. Irish storyteller Macallan McCourt, he'll be here around St. Patrick's Day. Kyle Eastwood, he's Clint Eastwood's son. He has a jazz band. He is really quite excellent. In April, Adam Pascal and Anthony Rapp, they are the original stars of Rent. They perform a great deal, but not too much together. In May, Suzanne Vega. Also, we have our Juilliard Series. The next performance in that is this Sunday. It's a neat series. It's at 3 PM on Sunday afternoons and also a very reasonable ticket. R&B with Eric Groberson and La Nubians. Eric Groberson happens to be in February. This is a typo. It's not Pam Eastwood, it's Pam Tillis, award-winning country and folk star. Chris Hillman, who is folk, he is one of the original founders of The Byrds. And Tom Wopat. And then one other that I skipped is this Friday evening, if you like, like the sounds like Ella Fitzgerald or Sarah Vaughan. We have the Sounds of Sarah Vaughan this Friday evening at 8 PM. And why I wanted to single it out is it features some South Orange residents. Rosina Hill is the vocalist. She'll be starting her eighth Broadway show in March, and she's doing all of the Sarah Vaughan tunes. She's backed up by a wonderful band, ensemble of six people. One is her husband, Grammy Award winner Jason Jackson. The other one is classic jazz pianist Cyrus Chestnut and some others, but it's a very reasonable ticket, and it's this Friday at 8. And Jason and Rosina are homeowners and taxpayers and citizens of South Orange. Other events coming up are Emmanuel Serjay. He is, I think, next Tuesday evening. This is the Seton Hall Series. Carolyn Dorfman Dance is a wonderful dance company. They'll be there in February. SHU Faculty Jazz Ensemble, SHU Orchestra, they started performing at Sopac this year. Richard Good, Jazz Knights of West Point. The SHU Theater Department actually mounts and performs for a week at a time each of their two shows. One is called Baby, and one is called Resurrection Blues. And then also the Paperbag Players will be coming up soon. They're a rental and they do kids' shows. In the loft, here's a list of these special events and rentals that we've had in the loft since July the 1st. I won't go over all of them, but they're quite diverse, from Village Meetings to Coalition and Race Dinner, to Leadership New Jersey, to business meetings and training meetings like Allegiance Bank, and Independent Beauty Seminar, and MS Wealth Management. Also, I'll talk a little more about this in development, the Irish Party with a Purpose that was there in December. Continuing, Children's Learning Pre-Holiday Pageant. That was from a local church, and they did their holiday show in the loft on December the 11th. And then, I won't go over them, you can look at them, but under Events in the New Year, these are booked events that will be coming up between now and June the 30th. Some recurring rentals that we have are, every Saturday morning, we have Zumba classes. Pam Dance started doing their dance classes out of Sopac in January, and they're there five days a week. St. James AME Church has a church service there every Sunday morning. And it looks like the South Mountain YMCA will also be back at Sopac with their camp this summer. Those are good community partnerships, but also they do help Sopac. They probably all total about $70,000 worth of rental income to help support Sopac. On the next page, this is development, as you know, when I arrived, we didn't even have a Development Director. A couple of these I'm repeating just because they haven't finished yet, but NJ Cultural Trust, we got our first grant from them for $15,000. It awards, specifically supports a study to be done, or a business analysis of Sopac by the Nonprofit Finance Fund, and that should be helpful. The New Jersey State Council on the Arts for $6,600. That will help support our part of Celebrate South Orange. We're going to be partnering with them this year to help with the entertainment. A PENPAT, which is from the Pennsylvania Arts Council, for $3,500, specifically for two kids' shows. The Verizon Foundation and the PSEG Foundation are both for educational programs, specifically those special school time matinees for kids, and we're so thankful to all of them. On the next page, this year, performance sponsors, we had hardly any last year. We had, I guess, around, you know, 18 or 20 this year for a total of $50,000. And that represents 35 of the artist fees being covered by those. Our official hotel sponsor this year, we didn't have one last year, is the Wilshire Grand, and they're actually helping us with a grant for 80 hotel rooms to help support our artists when they come in and stay all night. And that's substantial, because that would cost us, you know, easily $150 a night, if not more, for those rooms. Under Membership Update, our current membership, we have 174 active members. That's 6% increase over this time last year. Our membership program received an entire facelift in November. We did a mailing to every household in South Orange in December, and since December the 1st, we've received 43 new members as a result of that campaign. On the next page, our annual giving, which is good, but I'd like to increase it. It's $34,000. Now, this is separate from memberships or from sponsors, but it does include 30 new donors. Party with a Purpose that I mentioned on December the 10th or 11th, it was called Millie Iris's Party with a Purpose, a fun fundraiser. That's what she titled it. And it was celebrating her 80th milestone birthday and her 50th year in South Orange. And I'd be happy to go into any details, but she helped sponsor, she did sponsor John Pitzarelli, and a result of everything she did that evening, it was very successful. She helped Sopac that event to the tune of $50,669. And so we thank Ms. Iris, who's recovering from some surgery right now. The second annual, we started one last year, Sopac Business Leaders Breakfast, is on Thursday, March 29th. The keynote speaker is TBA, but we already have confirmation that Joe D., Essex County Executive, will be present and speaking a little bit that morning. And I know all of you are very, very busy. Last year, though, everybody was so busy, none of the elected officials in Sopac made it. So it'd be great if just one of you could say hi to...
I was there.
Were you there? Then forgive me. One of you were there, so hopefully...
I may forgive you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for correcting me. Any rate, it's the 29th, and it's really neat. We had a lot of different businesses present last year. Many had never been in Sopac. A couple of them ended up sponsoring shows this year, and a couple ended up renting the loft for an event later. So it's good for many, many reasons. Under Marketing, just a couple quick notes. Sopac was nominated by the Discover New Jersey Arts People's for the People's Choice Awards for the Best Performing Arts Center in New Jersey. The voting ended on January the 18th, and the announcement of the winners will be February, and I'll get that to you as soon as we hear the news. We did some special holiday discount promotions, including Cyber Monday and the 12 Days of Sopac Promotion. On Cyber Monday, sopacnow.org, our website, had more hits that day than any other time in that year. And I think we sold 150 tickets as a result of that. Season Playbill Advertising, it's our largest playbill ever. It was 64 pages for $25,000 worth of program ads. Press, this is a very congested and busy market to try to get your word out, but we have had since the season started feature articles in the New Record, Montclair Times, Matters Magazine, and regional publications like The Star Ledger, the NJ Herald, the NJ Monthly, and the NJ Family, and online hyperlocals like Patch.com, and we thank them for the support. Aristonet and Alternative Press. Also this year, we didn't do that a lot last year. We've started using, and we do it every day, Twitter and Facebook. And I do think that our social networking and marketing, it's definitely ramped up this year, and that's an area I'd definitely like to keep improving for the good of Sopac. Community Events and Partnerships, you can just look at those, but those are some of the many partnerships that we have ongoing right now. Particularly, I wanted to mention Concerts in the Park, Giants of Jazz, and then Jazz in the Loft, which starts in February. But those are all partnerships with the Village of South Orange. And I'll actually be meeting with our liaison, Trustee Gould, starting on Wednesday to get those rolling again this year, because it looks like we're very pleased and proud to be producing those events again in the coming year, FY13, I guess we're looking at. I won't go over all of them. These are specifically a list of upcoming shows between 1st of February and mid-May that not only have public performances, but they have private performances just for schools to be bussed in. Most of them have sold very well. Some have sold out. We still have a lot of tickets left for Casher Marionettes and Macbeth, so we're working on those. But the others are doing very well. These are just some of the shows we had last fall. Particularly John Pitzarelli, The Nutcracker, and Dance Theater of Harlem, all did very, very excellent. And then Comparisons for July 1 through December 31st of 2010 to 2011. These are just for Sopac shows, not rentals. You can see attendance last year was 3,970. This year, 5,768. Last year gross ticket sales, 136,193, and this year, 151,787. So we, from when I arrived 15 months or so ago, I think we've made some great progress. We still have a lot of work ahead of us, but I'm very pleased, we've got to keep working at it, but that the ship is slowly starting to turn, and I'm very, very pleased with that. As always, I thank you for your support and for all the work you do for the Village of South Orange. And I'd like to introduce Mr. John Zubek. He's our Treasurer, and he'll give the financial report, and we'll be pleased to answer any questions after. Thank you all very much. John?
How come he can do it, I can't?
This...
There you go. This is for the first six months of our fiscal year, which starts July 1st. I just want to make two comments before I go into these numbers, anticipating a couple of questions. The question of where are we with our 990, which is our tax filing, which we have to do every year? The 990 is completed. I have signed it. It is now, and it is a requirement that it be circulated among the Board of Trustees. We had our meeting last Thursday night. It was circulated among the Board of Trustees, and they will have until sometime later this week to make any comments. Not receiving any, it will be filed this week.
We still have a lot of work ahead of us, but I'm, I'm very pleased, we've got to keep working at it, but that, the ship is slowly starting to turn, and I'm very, very pleased with that. As always, I thank you for your support and for all the work you do for the Village of South Orange. And I'd like to introduce Mr. John Zubek. He's our Treasurer, and he'll give the financial report, and we'll be pleased to answer any questions after. Thank you all very much. John?
Thank you, Michael. How come he can do it, I can't?
This-
There you go. This is for the first six months of our fiscal year, which starts July 1st. I just want to make two comments before I go into these numbers, anticipating a couple of questions. The question of where are we with our 990, which is our, our tax filing, which we have to do every year. The 990 is completed, I have signed it. It is now, and it is a requirement that it be circulated among the Board of Trustees. We had our meeting last Thursday night, it was circulated among the Board of Trustees, and they will have until sometime later this week to make any comments. Not receiving any, it will be filed this week. That being said, the audit is ready, it is signed, and we are just waiting for bound copies, and as soon as we get them, they will be distributed to the Board of Trustees. Going forward with six months of revenue and expenses, you can see that the, I want to make a point before we go into the comparison between what the unaudited and unadjusted and the recast budget is. The first line at the bottom, it said budgeted numbers are based on a yearly budget divided by four budgeted quarters. So this actually is half, it should be two, because it's half of the budget. The budget is not, this year, broken down by months. You can appreciate that in the first quarter of the, of the year, which is July through September, our revenue was very low, because the season has not started, and we haven't generated a lot of income for ticket sales. And besides that, we don't, we don't recognize the ticket sale numbers until a show is presented. So even though we may have a cash flow that's in excess of what's up here in terms of earned revenue, we don't recognize it for the purposes of the budget. It is our intent that the budget next year, which will start in July, and which we're starting to work on, will, will show a variation in terms of what the budgeted numbers by month, based on what they really should be, based on what the percentage of income and expenses are for that particular period. But that budget right now, that's shown up there, is actually half of a year's budget. So you can see, as you can expect, because the first quarter is so low, that we are behind budget. The big areas that, in the contributed revenue that are, that are below budget, you know, our government, our government contributions, we had budgeted $400,000 for the, from the village for the year, and so far, through the first six months, we received $97,000. And in terms of expenses, you can see that we have done a very good job in terms of expenses. You would expect that, because in the first quarter, your expenses should be lower than, than, you know, a linear budget, because you're not presenting, presenting the shows. Some of the other areas where, so, so management in general, and program services, and everything, you know, it ends up being 37,000, $38,000 better than budget. So, that's kind of where we stand. We, if you, the other comments down there, both the actual and budgeted numbers include the Clearview Pass Throw, which has been accrued but not paid, and as I indicated about, I indicated the village subsidy issue, and also that actual performance revenues and expenses are not recognized until the performance is completed. We are looking forward to the second half of this fiscal year as being better. We're still budgeting, we're still receiving that we're going to come in close, close to budget. I think one of the areas which we are going to get some traction is, as Michael alluded to, is the area of grants. I think that with our grant writer, we've been able to generate a lot more grant applications than we have in the past. The big one is the New Jersey Council on the Arts, which is due in the middle of February, which we will submit, and hopefully, we will get, we'll get funded. We were not funded on a general operating basis last year, and we hope to this year. I will entertain any questions that anyone may have regarding where we are financially?
John, what do you expect, putting in your request for this year's subsidy? I know you usually do it around this time, we haven't really had our budget meeting to discuss it, but-
It, it would be in the, well, you know, we are still, there's still some ongoing discussions with, with how we're going to structure this going forward, with the, with the Board of Trustees. But we would, we would anticipate that our request would be somewhere in the neighborhood of the $400,000 that we asked for last year. That's what we need. We haven't, as I said, we haven't done the budget yet, but when we get to it, and certainly, I know, I know that Michael and I were involved with the budget meeting last year, when we talked about what we were, what we were going to ask for, from the, from the village, and we would hope that we would be invited back again this year. Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question, I think it's for Michael, though, on the New Jersey Cultural Trust Grant.
Okay, that would be Michael.
Right. What is that for? It's for a nonprofit business analysis, do you know what the scope of that is?
No, actually, we have not, literally, we are just starting that. So we just got word that we have the grant, and we'll be doing that, but as I understand, what they do is they look at not-for-profits, particularly not-for-profit arts organizations, and look at them, and try to, if you will, do an analysis of what you have, and make suggestions on how you're operating, and how you can improve the bottom line, so to speak. And that's very specifically what that grant is for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Same as our study. I wanted to just make a comment. I went to the Sopac Board Meeting for the first time in about a year last week, and I was really encouraged to see, there's a lot of new board members, they seem to be on board, very energetic, very enthusiastic, seem to be doing the right thing, and they're looking to be doing particularly well with grants, development, and some new marketing ideas, so I just wanted to share that with the board. It was really encouraging to come to the meeting and see what was happening with your board.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Thank you all very much, have a good evening.
Not right now. Thank you. Thank you, Michael and John.
Thank you.
Next, we have Adam Lerner, who's going to give an update from Seton Hall University.
Good evening. My name is Adam Lerner, I'm the Director of Community Relations at Seton Hall University. Thank you once again. I am here to give you a quick update on what's going on at Seton Hall, and what opportunities there are for community members to come up to campus. First, just FYI, on Wednesday, January 25th, at approximately 12 noon, the Seton Hall University's main campus will be conducting a test of both the emergency siren system and the pirate alert emergency notification. What you'll hear around noon is a loud siren, followed by verbal instructions on, depending on what type of emergency direction to our students to, whether to seek shelter or stay where you are. So, you'll hear that on Wednesday, January 25th. On Tuesday, January 31st, at 7:30, as Michael actually mentioned, Sopac, Seton Hall University's Art Council, will be doing a series, Guitarist Emmanuel Serguey and the Brooklyn Chamber Music Society, and an Italian program. Tickets are available through Sopac. Adults are $25, and seniors are 15. Open through February 17th, in the Walsh Gallery. It's on campus, located on the lower level of the Walsh Library. We are hosting the New American Landscape. This group exhibition demonstrates how artists are expanding the boundaries of traditional landscape through the presentation of new discourses, and the introduction of media not normally associated with this time-honored genre. If you haven't visited our gallery, our Walsh Gallery brings in some top artists from around the country. It's free and open to the public, it is open during pretty much normal business hours. I welcome everybody in the community to stop by and look at what we have displayed. Today, Clear Channel Media and Entertainment, the leading media company in America, announced that we'll add Seton Hall University's WSOU radio station to their new iHeartRadio. If you're not familiar with iHeartRadio, it is the number one free broadcast radio app for the iPhone and Android, and there's only a few radio stations, college radio stations, that they've now included, Seton Hall University is one of them. We're really proud of our radio station, they are a top-notch college station throughout the country, and so, we kind of wish them a congratulations in that point. As a save the date, on Friday, March 30th, Seton Hall will host its 18th Annual Women's Conference. This year's theme is Women's Education, Women's Empowerment. This will pay tribute to the valiant struggles waged by many tenacious women across years and across cultures to receive the same educational opportunities as men. If you have not participated in our Women's Conference, it's actually a wonderful conference we hold every year. We have many community members already participating, and we hope that many more will get involved. It's a wonderful kind of time to do it in March, which is also women's-
His dream.
Women's time to do, yes. The last thing that we have is, we are working in collaboration with Main Street. Main Street South Orange is very generous, and is helping us with a map that we are using to kind of help with our recruiting efforts with Seton Hall University. This year, as you guys are aware, we offered a great tuition rate for the incoming students with exceptional GPA scores and SAT scores. What we're doing this year is, we are, we're very understanding that part of Seton Hall is South Orange, and that's what we're selling, and we're excited to take this map, we are getting some, kind of, helping people as they're coming down in April, there's two dates in April, a freshman preview, and a freshman open house, or an open house for prospective students, and we're going to bring them down to the downtown, and so, we're giving all the parents these maps that are going to have all the businesses kind of listed on there. We're going to try to entice them to shop downtown, and check out the downtown for the day, and see how, why South Orange is such a great place to live, and why, you know, it's a perfect complement to Seton Hall University, so we're excited about, we're excited about that this year. Outside of that, that's about it.
I have a question.
Yes.
Based on your really exceptional reduction in tuition for those who have the GPA and the SAT and ACT scores, and that, your, that tuition matches the tuition of Rutgers State University, right?
That's correct.
Which is about 10,000-
I'm not sure of the exact numbers.
But it's significantly less than-
Absolutely.
You would norm. So, based on that, how's the response been to that offer?
So far, we've had a few open houses, or times where prospective students can come up to campus. We've had record numbers of students showing up, and so, people are very interested, we're getting a great response. What the university likes to see is that when deposits come in, and that's kind of what we're waiting for. This is, this is the point where students are starting to make early decisions, and that's all part of the early decision process of this program, so, it's too soon to tell, we don't want to kind of jinx it yet, but so far, so good. Is there anything else? Wonderful. Thank you very much for your continued support, and I will see you guys next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. So that concludes our presentations for this evening. We can move on to our approval of minutes. We have three minutes tonight, the continuation of the December 19th meeting minutes, which was held on January 9th, and then the January 9th regular meeting, and the January 17th Special Improvement District Workshop. If there is any discussion, if not, can we have a motion?
I move the minutes to be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we have one ordinance on first reading that's been tabled for a couple meetings. Could the village clerk please read his ordinance by title?
Yes. This ordinance has been tabled from November 30th. It's an ordinance to amend the code of the town to the South Orange Village, Section 92-3, the definition section, and Section 92-201, that's Schedule 3, the minimum off-street parking, to provide for bicycle storage and racks, and design criteria therefore.
Are we prepared tonight to take this off the table, or are we still waiting for the planning board to review and comment on this?
The planning board did review it, I don't have a report back from them, but I think it's ready for first reading, and we'll certainly have that by second reading, and I didn't hear that there was any objection, so.
Okay. Someone wants to make a motion to take it off the table?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor to take the motion off the table?
Aye.
What was the recommendation? I mean, is the planning board discussing it, or are they going to present something to us? And what was the, what was the outcome of that discussion? That was the whole point of sending it over there.
I'm not a member of the ordinance committee meeting, so I don't know the answer to that.
But point of order, we're voting right now.
Well, I'm asking a question, so I know how to vote, right?
Well, we're only taking it off the table right now, that's a procedural motion, but the answer to your question is, I got a report from Sal-
They can't hear you.
I got a report from Sal Randa, who was in attendance, and he didn't say anything negative, so I assume that they passed it without question. We had a meeting, a full meeting of the planning board the month prior to that, and everyone seemed fine with it, and the only suggestion was made was to exclude senior citizen housing by Harold Colton Max, who of course is the Director of the Jewish Community House and Corp, you know, buildings that we have here in town, so that would, I expect that to be, if the ordinance committee was aware of that, I expect that to be the only amendment.
And it was discussed at the Environmental Commission?
And it was discussed at the Environmental Commission, and I know a letter's coming in from them, so, I think the bases have been touched.
Okay, there was a second, and I was asking for a voice vote, if there was approval to take this off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. If someone would like to move and second this for first reading, they can also do so.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Before we have the vote, if we exclude senior citizens, is that, should we do that now, or is-
I, I would do that now.
All right.
I would do that now. I'd move to amend it to exclude it now.
All right, I'll do that by, just by voice to exclude a senior citizen.
Need to talk to them.
I am talking.
Don't worry, it's Steve's fault. We're going to get Steve a lapel pin, microphone.
Yeah. He said he couldn't hear Steve.
Sorry.
I'll move this ordinance with the amendment that senior citizen housing be excluded from the requirement that bike storage places be included within multifamily developments.
Okay, is there a second?
We'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Uh, no.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So, Ordinance 2011-21 did pass.
I move that ordinance 2012-01 be set down for a second reading and final passage at the February 27th, 2012 meeting of the Board of Trustees, and that a public hearing be held at that time, and that the village clerk be authorized to take the necessary action regarding public notice of such hearing.
Just, just to clarify that before we get a second, I think we're still under 2011, this is a continuation from last year, so we didn't strike and relist this, so we're still on 2011-21?
That is correct.
Okay.
I was anticipating that perhaps the board was going to strike it off the 2011 ordinance roll for disposition, and we did reintroduce it tonight as a new ordinance in 2012, but that, that's fine, either way, you would be fine.
Okay. So, you'll correct it.
I will correct the record, yes.
I second Pepper's motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'd like to open up tonight's meeting for public comments. There's someone that can grab the sign-in sheet from the back there. Thank you, Steve.
You skipped discussions.
Oh, I have discussion after public comments.
Or on, on our electronic copy, I, yeah.
All right, whatever. We can do public comments first, not to keep people, there's discussion, and that could go on a little while, don't want to give people too long. Elaine Harris. And if people can just keep their comments to a couple minutes, so we can get to everybody and just state your name and your address, if you'll please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Elaine Harris, the address is 177 Valley Street, South Orange. This is just to mention that I gave a memo to Village President Alex Torpe, who in turn forwarded the memo to Village Counsel Steve Rothen, so that I could express my point of view to this organization, that the, the method by which you have created an advisory committee to study the proposed Special Improvement District has a flaw, which I think is fatal to the, to the process. I just want to point out that under the New Jersey State statute, which creates- which creates, which enables the formation of a CIT advisory study, there is a mandatory provision that the board be constituted with a majority of people who are either property owners or occupants of property in the proposed district. By a resolution that was passed by this board in January of 2011, an advisory committee consisting of 13 people was formed. Of that amount, seven were property owners. And therefore, had that continued in that vein, it would have been compliant with the law. However, one of those members dropped out immediately. The business closed and left South Orange. And therefore, there remain only six for that category of the special improvement district advisory committee. Accordingly, since it's mandatory that there be a majority, and since six did not constitute a majority, I'm pointing out to this board on behalf of myself and those other people who are not in favor of the proposal for a special improvement district, that it is not legally permissible to continue in the course of action that you are, what appears to be the course of action that you are taking. And we urge you to please not go forward with it based on those reasons. And to at best cure the situation by creating an appropriate and legally constituted board for this purpose. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Village council, would you like to comment at all on this?
I have, I have advice for the board, but I would prefer, unless the board wants me to, to give that advice in confidence in the executive session.
That's fine. Thank you.
I just want to point out, the person in question, although we stated his intention, he stated his intention to drop off the committee. He never did formally resign, even though he did ask him for a resignation. So he never did resign from the committee. He didn't show up after the first two meetings, I don't think. But he never did resign.
I apologize for the next person. I can't read the handwriting. It's last name Andrews. Jared?
Andrews.
Andrews.
Handwriting was never one of my strong points, Alex.
I can certainly empathize.
Yes, okay. I wrote down there CIT as the, you can't understand what I'm saying, Michael?
No, I can. I was just leaning into here.
I wrote down CIT as the reason that I wanted to come up and address the word. And the reason I wrote down CIT is because it appears to me that the governor passed a restriction on how much taxes could be raised. So being that there is a limitation on how much taxes could be paid by residents, real estate tax owners, it appears that the village council, or whatever you call yourselves these days, found a loophole. So it has come to my attention that the majority of business owners in this town are not interested in a CIT. And it seems as though it's very elusive as to who these people are and why they wanted to have this happen. So I ask myself, why do taxes go up? I can tell you why taxes go up, and you know why taxes go up. Taxes are a way of citizens paying for your mistakes. Paying for your mistakes. They are the way that we assage the way that you spend our money. So when Mr. Torpey wouldn't allow me to ask a question.
It's pronounced Torpee.
Okay. I couldn't read your name properly, I guess. When we are asked to pay our property taxes, no one ever says to us, send in your property taxes, but by the way, don't ask any questions at our meetings until it's your turn. Because we're the elected officials. You elected us, right? Don't ask us why we have free gifts given to our village, like the Tao, that we don't own, that we just have the right to use for a certain period of time, that we spent money to have cast for 75,000, that we spent money to have moved, that we put nice little park benches around. And it was part of the South Orange call for culture. The Bay Area Community Center was not enough. So we had to go out and we had to borrow millions of dollars. But don't worry about those millions of dollars, because those millions of dollars are not the taxpayers' problem. The taxpayers are not on the hook for this money. It's SOPAC. It's an independent organization. But unfortunately, when I went to look at the tax-free municipal bonds that were raised to pay for that, that I, as a taxpayer, am paying the interest and will eventually pay the principal, I would say right now, we are somewhere between 15 to 20 million dollars in terms of current and future forecast of cost for how much we are going to be into SOPAC. So when we looked at the numbers, I had a question for the people who we subsidize. And I think it's a fair question. Wouldn't you think so, Alex? Wouldn't you think it's a fair question as a taxpayer to be able to ask people who we give hundreds of thousands of dollars away per year? That we help them with their budget, that they forecast to be in the black by now? That the village scuttlebutt is that eventually, the way that we're going to hide our problem is that the village will own SOPAC. Because they'll never be able to get out of the red. So therefore, the village will own SOPAC because it's so wonderful. It's so wonderful, SOPAC. Like the flash mobs it's attracted. It's so wonderful, SOPAC. Because when I first found out that we would have a movie theater in South Orange, I thought, isn't this exciting? And we're going to have artsy movies. Remember that, artsy movies? Whatever happened to those artsy movies? We were going to compete with Montclair. But no, that just didn't happen. So we have popular movies that may attract people to come to see movies. But they're not the same people that would be attracted to a more mature audience. They're a young audience. And young people, let's face it, they get excited. So therefore, we tell our village store owners that they should close the stores because we're having civil unrest in the streets. And the police don't want to arrest them. Now, why is that? Police don't want to arrest people with civil that are causing problems in the streets? Why don't we want to arrest them? Because it's not politically, you know, it's really not a politically correct thing to do. We shouldn't be arresting these people. After all, they're just having a good time. But then on the other side, we want to have a CIT. How come? Because we want to attract store owners to come to our town. So we're not going to spend money. But don't worry about it. It's not going to cost the taxpayers anything. It's going to be paid for by a special group of store owners, not the taxpayer. Yet who's really on the hook? Once again, we, the taxpayers, look in the mirror and realize that our elected officials, who should be our servants, are actually our dictators. They tell us what they want, and then we have to say yes. And we want to comment or ask questions, we're told no. We have a meeting about CIT. I think this is the third one I've come to. I believe it's, you know, I was believing that CIT was going to be on the topic tonight. And the last meeting I went to, I believe the meeting started promptly at eight. Questions were promptly over at 8:10 or 8:15. You can check your records. I'm sure it's back there somewhere. But records were closed very quickly. How come? Is it because the people who work for you, our board, us, the taxpayers who owe you so much? Because you work so hard for us, that we're not allowed to ask questions just at any time? We have 10 to 15 minutes to ask questions. We're not allowed to ask you questions because we owe it to you. You are, you are doing us a gigantic favor. Just like the board that sat up here, and some of you were on the board at the time, when I stated that SOPAC would not make money. And we had a group from SOPAC, the people who had the projections, the people who had the nice flashy PowerPoints that showed us how they were going to make money. When I knew that Carnegie Hall can't make money, Lincoln Center can't make money, Pavement Playhouse can't make money, but SOPAC's going to make money. We're going to get grants. And they talked about the grants. The biggest grant was to tell them how to run their business. And guess what? You know what that grant should tell them? Ask the village for more money. Because they're only giving you 400,000. Let them bail you out. Let them pay you for everything. Let them, make sure that SOPAC never has to be putting a new roof on, that nobody ever vandalizes SOPAC that somebody's going to have to pay for. We, as homeowners, know that there's maintenance. I didn't see anything up there. I saw depreciation, but I didn't see anything about saving money for future improvements to SOPAC, repairs to SOPAC, holes in the roof at SOPAC, nothing. Reminds me of a minor detail. When they had decided to build SOPAC, all of a sudden at the end, they realized, well, nobody's going to know where it is. So they had to go out and they had to put a sign on the top. And the sign only cost a quarter million dollars, let's face it, small in comparison to the overall cost of the project. And now people can see it from the street and people can see it from the train. So I would ask the village seniors or council members, or whatever you call yourselves, to keep something in mind. That you can go out and you can have all the readjustments and appraisals of property. And we know at the end that so many people at home said, oh, wow, this is great. My assessment went down by 25%, this is terrific. Only to receive the tax bill from the village. And guess what? Their taxes didn't go down, their taxes went up. Once again, papering over the problems that you guys make. We didn't ask you to spend all this money. You spend the money. You borrowed the money for SOPAC, 20 million bucks by the time we're done. Now you're going to open up another Pandora's box for a CIT to improve the business. Why don't we allow the police department to help the business owners run their businesses without worrying about people coming in, stealing from them, having flash mobs? Why don't we utilize some of our tax dollars? Let's face it, we pay our police officers a lot of money. They do a good job. They give out tickets, right, to the citizens of our village. Why don't we try to give some tickets out to people who are creating disturbance in our village? Why do we have to be so politically correct? So in closing, I would try to remind you that, in my opinion, your job is not to spend money. Your job is to save money and to protect the citizens of our village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leslie? Leslie, talk.
Mr. Torpey, I think speakers are generally limited to three minutes.
Yes.
If you want to change that, announce it to everybody so they know, but.
I did ask people to try and keep their comments brief.
And I was going to echo that, trustee Bauer.
Not, not picking on you, Leslie, but we, we do have a three-minute rule.
I don't usually go over.
Yeah, I know you don't. And Elaine didn't either, and we really appreciate that.
And you're always good with that.
Well, you know, listen, we want to, we want to see people involved in our village. That's, that's the big thing. They sure are involved when they pay the tax bill. But getting back to the, 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 what Elaine brought up about the law and the CIT committee, as you know, I've been on quite a few of them. And I will say that the committees that they had previously, they always had more property owners. Actually, Nancy, you were on one. There were always more business and property owners. We shouldn't even be addressing something where they're shy six. It should be an overabundance of the voice of the very people that you're going to tax. And I think now, if you consider that it isn't in accordance with the law. And that is a big problem. And you start asking, you have seen throughout these meetings, many property owners at these meetings. I think you're going to see a raise of hand, of property owners that want to be involved in a process, want to see the best for this village. We, we live in it. This is our livelihood. It's to our advantage for it to be the best. And the more involvement you get, you have property owners that have already said, we will give a check, we will do things, where we will give freely. If you're writing a tax bill and a checking, you know, that, it just may end there. There may go your generosity. You've done your part. And that's very important. But right now, we should address the fact that this is not in compliance with the law. But I will say, the years previously, that ever they had one of these committees, Bill always appointed more business people. In fact, one time, there were like 18 people. And they said, how can these 18 people work together? We did. We did. We did. And Nancy was part of that committee. We worked and we worked hard. So my, I would rather favor that we, we try and do this right, correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, again. No, it's not. Gil? Gil? Joe?
Hi, my name is Gil Eagles. I'm a property owner. I think the last time I stood up here, I made a comment that it's commendable that we, the committee tries, the town tries to make our town better. The thing that I said last time was improvements that were previously discussed did not really involve anything to do with parking. The last time I was here, I had mentioned Montclair. There was a time that I went to Montclair before they built the parking lot, or the parking building that I have there. Wanted to go to the movies there, couldn't find a spot, and left. Did it a few times. Now, my wife and I, we go to Montclair quite often. First, we like those, the kind of films that they have there. But secondly, it's convenient. I think the attention we need to focus on in South Orange is how can we make it convenient for people to come here? Convenient to find a place to park, so they can go eat in a restaurant, they can go shopping. SOPAC would do so much better if people knew they could come here and be easy to get here and easy to attend. I second what my fellow citizens say. Thank you.
Thank you. Fernando Cabrera?
Good evening. Fernando Cabrera with Affiliated Management, 3 through 5, Bose, South Orange. I've been before you before, and I'm here once again, giving an alternate viewpoint. We are not for the CIT, but there are opportunities that exist currently in the municipality to achieve a lot of the goals that you're looking for the CIT to accomplish. Once again, you have a wonderful Main Street, South Orange organization. I think it's admirable that they're willing to sacrifice themselves for the betterment of the community. I, I think we can all agree that if they were funded properly, maybe the CIT topic wouldn't even be on the table today. But unfortunately, they're not. It's my understanding that most of the Main Street, South Orange funding comes from private donations, homeowners, taxpayers. I think it, the time has come for the business community to step up and demonstrate what it can be, what it can do. I know affiliated management and its interests in, in the municipality would be more than happy to do so, as well as many of the other property owners. It's my understanding that there hasn't been a true outreach program. It's my understanding that there hasn't been a true outreach program to the property owners in the past. I'm not making excuses for anyone. Because at the end of the day, every business, whether they're in the proposed district or not, the Main Street, South Orange, that's what attracts people to live in a municipality. So there is an absolute opportunity to capitalize because of the reality of the interest and the magnet that South Orange and its Main Street has, not just in the proposed improvement district, but for everyone that has investments in the community. It would be disingenuous to say that that's not the case. Through private and public discussions, it's been nice to see that both sides of this agenda aren't that far apart from one another. It's just a matter of implementation and, let's face it, funding. I believe Main Street, South Orange does a wonderful job. They've demonstrated they have the right people to do it. My personal fear is with them sacrificing themselves and a SID being implemented, that maybe the new people coming in that would be appointed to this board, if it got that far, they wouldn't have the passion that I've seen demonstrated by the members of Main Street, South Orange. So I would ask that this process be given a second look. It's my understanding that this is possible legal hiccup here in regards to the numbers to implement the process. And if so, that naturally should lend itself to slowing down, taking a look at it, correcting the matter. And if there's still a drive to move forward with the SID, then hopefully, the business community will finally step up and demonstrate that all the work that Main Street, South Orange has done can be propelled to the level that you're looking at and quite possibly higher by donation. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Nancy Heinz Glazer, 125 Sherman Place, South Orange, 32 years' worth, same house, same husband, many different jobs. I'm just here to recognize the passing of Don Thomas, who was our September 26th Villager of the Month. And he was a dear friend of South Orange history and he loved this community. And I know he'll be mad at me if he's listening that I'm even mentioning it, but one of his greatest moments was when he came and spoke before you and everyone up there listened to him. And I want to thank you and all of us in this whole universe. All we want to know is we did something that made a difference. So thank you for listening to him. He felt that he did.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Don's legacy will live on with all the contributions that he's made, especially helping us understand the history of the town that we live in. Dan?
Dan Savoti, 15 South Orange Avenue, business and building owner in the town. Just want to thank you for letting me come up and say rewards. And I want you, when you're looking towards the SID and the impact and the number of businesses that are leaving the town or have left the town, and now with the new assessment where the commercial buildings have taken the brunt of the increase of taxes, and then to put on top of that a SID, you're just going to drive more people out of the town and no one's going to want to come in and help develop the downtown area. The tax assessment, I haven't gotten the exact numbers coming in, but doing the figures, when all the residential went down 15 to 25 percent, it has to be made up whereas the commercial buildings are being left at their assessment, very small decrease or even an increase. And that impact really should be looked at before you move further with a SID and putting more of a strain on the businesses and the building owners in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa Aronson?
President Torpe, trustees. In 2012 budget, residency residents for 2.7 tax increase. Essex County gave the residents a 3.0 tax increase, a 6 percent.
Can you just make sure you're speaking into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
What is wrong with this picture? Well, I'll tell you as well in the scenario. Residents of this town, South Orange, cannot bear it no longer. You must stop taxing residents to death. Governor Christie gave South Orange a 210% cap. I want to know how many abandoned homes are there in South Orange?
Thank you.
We can certainly look into that number. How many are banned? Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak at this time? Just please come up and name and address, please.
I'm Bill Calabrese. I own 13 Scotland Road. And I just want to give a little quick, three-minute dissertation. And I gave a little talk last time we discussed this, and my ideas about SIDs and how I studied them for many years, and I really thought that most of them were destined to fail no matter what happens. But there was a gentleman who lived about 100, about 50, 60 years ago, very famous man, his name was Will Rogers Jr. He was the Clint Eastwood of his day. And he once said, "I made a lot of mistakes at the right time." And what I'm saying today is the SID is a good concept, but today is the wrong time for a concept like the SID. You have businesses that struggle. In fact, everybody I hear speak today, they're successful businessmen and women in South Orange, and they have a fear of it. Now, why would a successful business person have the fear of something? They should be welcoming something because they know business, they know how to make money. All these people have been successful for many, many years, and they don't see this as something that's going to help and build their community, which they love. So all I want to leave you with today again is, and I'm not sure if you have this done already, but when I was doing a lot of work on SIDs myself, I did speak to people in Red Bank myself personally, Englewood myself personally, any place that had a successful at that time special improvement district, to find out their opinions of it. And all I saw at the time was that these things grew like monsters. You know, they started out small, and before you know it, they had a director for 150,000, 200,000, they had a complete staff. And I used to say, well, where am I going with this? It's bad enough the money, as the gentleman said in the back, that I was spending already, which I thought at that time was the right thing to do for this community to make it grow. And that was just going to be another burden that this community did not need. So I would say before you, you know, I know first reading doesn't mean too much, but before you get to the second reading, I would pull in the people from Englewood, yourself personally, talk to the people from Red Bank personally, because these were supposed to be the two most successful in the state at the time. And I believe they're both floundering a little bit today. So I would just find out from them, what have they seen as the pattern? Has it really become the death nail as I see it in my own vision of how these special improvement districts work? But sooner or later, the rents go up, the taxes go up, and before you know it, you can't put a person in your storefront to rent your business, and then the whole town looks like a boarded up community. So if I could give any advice, I would say, please do it yourself. Bring in the people from Englewood, bring in the people from Red Bank, and I don't know who's out there that's successful. I'm not talking about new special improvement, I'm talking about people that have been around for eight to 10 years. And ask them what they have seen and has it worked and functioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? Okay, if not, I'd like to close public comments. And very briefly, before we move on to discussion, there is one issue that was raised during public comments that I'd just like Village Council to comment on, which is that the comments that we are not in compliance with the law. I know we're going to have a discussion about that in the executive session, but if you could give your very brief opinion on that for the sake of the public, if the board wishes, I would appreciate that.
If the board wishes that I do that, discuss in detail?
No, not in detail.
Well, I believe, I believe that factually and legally, the presentation that was made with regard to this statute not having been complied with is wrong. And at the appropriate time, I will advise this board, and if the board wishes me to make that opinion public, I will.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to our discussion items this evening. The first one up is red light camera RFP. Trustee Goldberg, do you want to start that?
Yes. Totally different topic. So for everyone's benefit, this is the discussion of automated red light traffic cameras that we've been talking about now for, I look back at some emails, literally four years. We've discussed it here, we've discussed it at Public Safety, we've had a number of presentations, we had some sample studies done by one of the vendors. And then last year, in early 2011, we decided as a board to go out for an RFP, to put out an RFP and see what kind of responses, see what kind of vendor responses we would get. Two vendors responded, one called Red Flex and the other is called ATS. And we've talked about this a little bit of Public Safety, I mean, the responses to the RFP are enormous, as I'm holding here in my hand. And basically, we're at a crossroads now. We need to make a decision as to whether or not this is something we want to pursue and whether we want to move forward with it. Personally, I have very mixed feelings, I'm torn, I see the pros and the cons. The police chief has given his blessing on it, he thought, he made the recommendation of Public Safety, but I was the only trustee at Public Safety this past meeting, so we didn't have a really discussion there. So we need to respond to these vendors that responded to the RFP and let them know if we're awarding the contract or not. That clock is ticking. So I thought I would bring it here and we could have a discussion whether this is something we want to pursue or not. Again, from a public safety perspective, obviously it has its benefits. You know, there's, you know, by having an automated camera, clearly if you're running a red light, you know, the people get a ticket in the mail after it's being verified by a police officer. Of course, the downside is, you know, there's all kinds, you know, people will say, oh, it's Big Brother and it's all about revenue and, you know, this, it's a very contentious, very controversial issue. The city of Newark has them, and I travel to Newark frequently now to take the train. I know it has changed my behavior. When I come up to a red light, I'm not sure if that intersection has a red light or not, so I stop. I make that effort. On the other hand, I've been the unfortunate recipient of an automated ticket, and I know how painful and intrusive that feels. So I'm really personally torn about this.
The ticket goes to the car owner, right?
Correct. It goes to the registered owner.
I think my car's on my wife's there.
Do you have which traffic lights are in the proposal?
That's my question.
Yeah, it's a great question. They did do a study a while ago, several years ago, and they made, but again, that was only one vendor, right? And then now this is a, it happens to actually be the same vendor. Again, we got two responses. Of the two, the chief said if we were to go forward, he would recommend this vendor.
Which lights were we talking about, by the way?
Who's Scotland Road was?
I mean, they're all on county roads, right? They're the ones on South Orange Avenue, the ones on Valley, and, right, those are the main traffic lights.
So have those particular intersections been picked out, or is that up to the company to decide and study where they would?
That's correct.
So what is the, does the contract award, how do you award a contract for, you know, unspecified number of installations, I guess?
Basically, it's cost neutral to the town. It costs neutral, right? There's no cost, the way this works, the financials are, the company takes a cut of every ticket. So there's no outlay for capital, the company takes care of everything. So in that regard, you know, the theory goes, the more systems you have, therefore the more revenue you get, and there's no additional cost implication. You know, like I said, it's a very, you know, thorough, very complicated response to the RFP, as you can see by this, and any of you are welcome to look at it.
As far as the Big Brother issue, which, you know, I understand, but we've already put cameras in the downtown for monitoring things, and we're planning on putting more cameras in, but this could actually help us with that at the outskirts of town because we, it would be one camera.
Well, no, I don't think so.
That's right. In fairness, they cannot be used for any other purposes. That's the law.
But on the other hand, we've already put cameras in, so the Big Brother issue, we've already dealt with that to some extent.
It's less the Big Brother watching than, you know, than, you know, if you get pulled over by a police officer, you know, you have a chance of sort of negotiating your way or talking to them or something. Whereas when you have a picture of your car and your license plate and a camera done by a computer, you can't fight it. I mean, you can, of course, you have that right, but let's be honest, the chances are slim.
But you went to a red light.
What was that?
But you did go to a red light.
The problem is...
You could say it was photoshopped.
The problem is, you didn't necessarily go through a red light in the sense of being traffic unsafe. I mean, I would never go through a red light, and I don't believe I've ever gone through a red light, and coming up to April, that'll be 40 years of driving. However, I've already had two of these tickets too, including in Newark, and it's changed my behavior, and it's changed my behavior in a way that I don't believe the state of New Jersey or the legislature intended, and that is, right turn on red is no longer a viable move here. Right turn on red was done in the 1970s to respond to the Arab oil embargo and the energy crisis because it saves a lot of gas over time. And the way that program was instituted, and I know this for a fact, was that every single intersection was visited by a team of people from DOT and at the time DOE, which we had one. And the site distances and everything was determined to make sure that in that particular intersection, you could safely make a right turn on red. Now, in intersection, when I go to Newark for depositions or to the train station or something like that, but particularly for depositions, I've been going to the same building for at least 20 years, making the same right turn on red after coming to a full stop and parking in the same deck, and now I get a ticket. And I checked, of course, after I got the first time, and there is a sign there. I don't know that there was ever a sign there before, there was certainly no enforcement, but I suspect that that's a new sign. So what happens is, signs go up and people come to a complete and full stop, no one is endangered. I would never cross a crosswalk with a pedestrian in it or something, particularly being, you know, one of the persons in the state who has promoted pedestrian safety. And all of a sudden now, like, I will stop, there's no place, Newark or, you know, Vineland, New Jersey, I will no longer make a right on red because I don't know where the camera is.
So you would be okay?
It's ridiculous.
So in intersections where it says no right turn on red, for instance, like Wyoming Avenue and South Orange Avenue?
The problem is, the sign is before the stop line.
That's a different issue, but everybody knows there's no right turn on red at that intersection, or most people know. So you would have no problem at those intersections, or you're saying wrong intersections?
I would have no problem based on a couple of things. First of all, I want to see a study, I mean, that's a very thick study, but I want to see a real study to see how much red light running, and I mean actual red light running, is a problem in South Orange. If this is a problem, then we have to solve it because traffic safety comes first in people's lives, and particularly right out here at this intersection where it's difficult to cross, you know, it does take a long time, and there is a countdown signal now at both of our major intersections and so forth. But still, I want to see that there's really a problem that we're resolving before we start collecting a lot of money from our residents and other towns' residents. And secondly, I want to know where they're going. So they would have to tell us that.
I agree, I really want to know where they're going before them. They can decide, but I don't want to just give them a blank, carte blanche approval. I'd only want it at intersections where there's no right turn on red because of that problem that I've heard before. Or we can ask the county to make all those traffic lights no right turn on red, which also we have a problem with. It's the study, I don't know, and I haven't seen that study, obviously, I don't know how comprehensive it is.
It's not necessarily a study per se, again, it's a response to our RFP, so there's their financial proposal, their technical proposal, and then there's other literature and stuff.
But they did do a study though for the town, didn't they?
Yeah, that was a couple of years ago.
I think the first one did. The first one did do a study, but I don't think that, I don't know whether John shared with anybody else on the committee maybe, but I know we didn't share with the full trustee board which intersections it was.
Does Maplewood, Milrow, Monmouth, any of the local towns have this?
Hold on, let me answer the first question. I believe what happened with the study was that what they did is they did counts, and they counted the number of cars that went through the light and the number of violations that they counted. I don't believe they made recommendations about specific intersections at that time. To your other question, I'm not, again, Newark obviously is the biggest nearby town. Again, in here, there's a list of other municipalities that do it, I'd be happy to find that. Actually, it said East Orange, Edison, Englewood Cliffs, Hackensack, Hillside, New Brunswick, Patterson, Roseland, Springfield, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a number of other communities.
I would be curious to hear how Springfield has reacted to this. I would be curious to hear how Springfield has reacted to their, to the reaction, but I know in New York City, they've done it, and outside in the outer boroughs, there's been a lot of controversy, but I know in Queens, they said that it's actually cut down greatly on the number of pedestrian accidents. So, it, but it's a...
But they're only going to install them where it's profitable to the company to install them?
Probably, sure.
No, that's, that's their business plan.
But I guess what I'm saying is, it's sort of a one size fits all, you know, we're going to have it, and I, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, let's make it useful to us and make sure that the size actually fits the shoe problem that we have.
I see the chief is here, do we want to put him on the spot?
Most of our major intersections have no right turn on red.
Well, are we aware right now of particular intersections that have traffic safety problems resulting from people running red lights?
We would have to ask the chief, and that was one of the things we had asked for, is the number of accidents at traffic control, traffic light controlled intersections, and the number of summonses that have been given over the past period. I imagine the number of summonses given is relatively low, because our officers are doing other things, but number of accidents, clearly, we could quantify.
Chief, are you prepared to comment on any of those?
Being out of the numbers, but at least you get to comment on the issue.
I know that Red Flex would be more than happy to come out and do a study on some of those, on the intersections where we have lights, they can do that on short notice. I think of the fact that if you have cameras at traffic lights, rather than being a specific deterrent, I think it would be a general deterrent to the public, motivating public. I'd be in favor of that, but it's something that, you know, you as a board have to decide what you'd like to do with that. I can see both sides of the argument on that. But if you want, I can reach out to Red Flex and have them do a study for you, I don't think it would take that long.
I'd be appreciative.
Yeah, and a question, is one of the points that the, that even if you put these cameras on, let's say, three intersections, but there are 15 busy intersections, that them being on those three would deter people in the other 12?
You know, I think it would be, I think it would be just a general deterrent, that if you got the word out that South Orange has cameras at traffic signals, I think it would. But I certainly can get ahold of them and have that done for you.
And they would, they would do that without being awarded a contract?
Yes.
Are there any issues with two respondents to an RFP and one of them coming out and doing a study like this? I mean, there's no financial exchange.
Steve?
Steve?
Or whoever you get.
Interesting question.
The question is, is there, are there any, are there any legal or other issues with one of two respondents to an RFP doing a study, a traffic analysis on our different intersections, without having awarded a contract?
As long as the results are, and you're going to go out for proposals, that everybody be given equal access to the information?
Well, I think, I almost turned around, I think we did, we sort of did that already. I think where we are now is that if we were to award a contract, I think the recommendation is for this company.
Recommendation is for Red Flex, actually.
Yeah, but I think trustee Bowers said that before she would want to go that next step, she would like to have this information prior to making the decision.
But I thought John, I thought John, and you mentioned it earlier, trustee Bowers, I thought John had a study.
I believe it was just a, it was more of a count, sort of saying you have X volume and Y violations in a certain period of time, and, you know, oh, therefore, yeah, this would be a good solution for you.
He never gave us the information.
They never looked.
I think it was more or less just a count, they did a traffic of vehicles that traveled on the roadway there. I can get more unofficial account.
Well, I don't have a problem with someone doing a real study, as long as if you're going to use that, that that's not proprietary to that particular firm, and that the information may be available generally to all proposers.
But then we'd have to go out and trip it again altogether.
Does that invalidate the RFPs that we, the responses to the RFP?
I would think so. I would think you'd want to go out and give everyone the same.
I'm confused, but I thought we did this study already.
I thought so too, you know, maybe I'm mistaken as to the nature of the work that was done.
But I, but I, but I agree with Janine's point, though, I don't think we should just give them carte blanche, we should know which traffic lights, and they should have to get approval from us on it. And I don't think they can just say they're going to do it, you know, at these six lights and we say, no, this one doesn't.
Why don't we ask the Public Safety chair to work with the chief?
Actually, Janine, sorry, I just found an email, a memo from May 5th, 2010, there was a, this was done, the study was done on Thursday, April 8th, 2010, over a 12-hour period, and there, westbound, there were a total of 89 violations, and eastbound, there were a total of 28 violations. So, over a 12-hour period in one day.
On what, Scotland?
And this was the intersection of South Orange Avenue and Scotland Road.
And that was traffic on South Orange Ave, or which direction did you say that was?
Eastbound, east-westbound, so on South Orange Avenue.
So, over 100 violations.
That's a lot.
And is that, is that, is that, how do they determine what's a violation? I know there are some companies that give a delay.
They have a delay factor built in, I think there's three seconds.
And was that, was that built into that study? Do you know if there was like, was that the instant that the light turned red? Was that if the light was red and someone was in the intersection, but when they were at the stop line, it was yellow?
It's based upon whatever criteria that was established, whatever the standard is, is what they use.
Yeah, I think this needs to go back to committee so we can ask all these questions. Because, for instance, I mean, if you're in the intersection and you keep going, that's allowed in New Jersey, it's called following in traffic, and it's a good defense to a ticket. I certainly have used that, I mean, only for my clients.
But Janine, supposedly, supposedly, those tickets are reviewed by an officer before they're issued.
Well, they have to be, yeah.
So, they look, if that was the case, then the officer could say, no, that's...
Right, because the person reviewing this doesn't get a photo, correct, they actually get a video.
Right.
The officer, you mean?
Yeah, I know there are some companies, right, they get a video of the person, like a 10-second or 5-second clip.
Officer has to, has to review the video and issue the ticket.
Correct.
I think you're just right, it needs to go back to committee.
Chief, do you know if the camera can pick up the nice guy who waves us on through on the red lights? Can I get picked up?
I would recommend you not be out here.
Yeah, what are you going to do with him?
Probably not a good idea to have him out.
Because I would probably get, you know, I mean, if you're getting waved through and you're on a red light, but he waves you through on red lights all the time. Thank you, thanks a lot.
All right, well, it sounds like there's some consensus for this to go back to the Public Safety Committee. Trustee Goldberg, back.
We could certainly do that, I know we have a timing issue, I'm trying to find the details. Ellen, I don't know if you remember off the top of your head what our drop dead date is, or do you have to, can we ask for another extension?
You know what, I think you can get Red Flex to come here and speak to you directly if you'd like. Do you want that?
After we get some more information, you know.
I know they're willing to come out and speak.
Okay, the Public Safety Committee can definitely consider that, I think.
And Ellen's going to ask for an extension.
She could ask for another extension, Ellen, in the meantime?
Make a study.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, chief.
Okay.
Okay, our next discussion item is the status of the Village Hall move and relocation.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I reported previously, in planning for the move out of this building in preparation for rehabilitation, we realized that the information technology issues, the IT issues, were the things that were going to take the longest. And we've, and we're planning to build the rest of the timetable around that. And the major issues involve improving the village's network among the various buildings in town, and setting up the location down on Valley Street so it would be part of that network. And there, there are issues involved with cable, developing the network, switches, wiring, putting the servers in new locations and so forth. We had a meeting last week on this and allied issues, and Stan Wilkinson, the acting IT director, indicated that it would be about five to six weeks of concurrent work once we tell people to proceed. And happily, it appears that we have contractors who have state contracts, which means we won't have to formally go to bid on, on the project. Also looking at how to deal with the phone system and making a preliminary recommendation at this point to acquire a new small switch for use in the trailers. And then when the village offices move back here, that that switch would go to the Baird, which is not currently part of the overall village system. And that we would reuse the existing system in the new building. So, with the five to six week lead time, the other thing that we discovered is the difficulty of coming up with a good coherent set of specifications for the office trailers, because we're, we're not simply looking for a freestanding trailer, we are looking for two groups of trailers that will, in essence, form two office buildings on the site. So, it's a good deal more complex than, than most office trailer installations. In looking at this, Sal Rando, the village engineer, has taken the lead on this, and he has made a recommendation that I pass along to you, that I think has a lot to be said for it, and that is to integrate the trailer bid with the bid for the building renovation itself. To make it the responsibility of the contractor to acquire the trailers, locate them, maintain them, do the, do the preparation, hook them up to water, hook them up to sewer, hook them up to the network, so on and so forth. A number of advantages to this. One is it, it totally integrates that with the overall project. We don't get into a situation where we're doing it and we end up getting in there four months earlier than we need to, or the other way, that the project is held up. In the first case, we end up paying for trailers for longer than we need to pay for them, in the other case, we have a delay claim by the contractor. It also becomes an incentive for the contractor not to get himself a lot of extra charges for the temporary facilities and to move the building project itself along much quicker. There is also, we believe, a chance that the contractor, as a potential repeat customer, which we would not be, would get a better price on the trailers than we would get even going to bid. So, we make that recommendation to you. The, the schedule, as the village engineer has laid it out at this point, has us with a construction consultant onboard by the end of February. At that point, the architect would finish the plans after consultation with our, our construction consultants, doing the, the value engineering and the overall review and coordination of the plans. Sal feels that we can bid in June and award in July, with the idea that we would give the contractor a notice to proceed in August, and at that point, we would move the offices into the trailer. And I think that, that recommendation has a great deal of merit. It occurred during this process of discussing how we're going to do this and coordinate it, we had coordination going on, on three lines that would still happen, except that we, we would no longer have to be involved with actually bidding the trailers. And I do, not just in passing, but I really want to commend the work that Sal and Ellen Mangeri have done on, on this element of it, the work that Stan Wilkinson has done on the, on the IT element of it, and Laura Harris is working on the internal coordination of getting rid of things that we can get rid of, preserving what we need to preserve, mostly in the area of documents, and putting that on a schedule, because that, for the people with offices in this building, will be, I think, the, the most difficult part of this move, is, is dealing with the whole document issue. On the issue of the Village Hall design itself, this gets tied in with the recommendation discussed at the last meeting about a customer service desk, and that was referred back to committee. We met also last week, trustee Levison, trustee Davis Ford and I, to discuss the reorganization, both long-term and short-term. And they did endorse the idea of the centralized customer service desk, and Sal has also used the magic of computer design to take a look at how that might actually work in the, in the renovated building, and it, it looks as though it has a great deal of promise, and also happily gives a good deal more flexibility to what can be done with the other offices if the customer services are centralized off a lobby. And it has opened up some possibilities there that didn't seem to exist before. So, would also recommend that to you and ask that you endorse it so that we can put it in the hands of the architect. And also, as a result of that discussion of the reorganization, I'll be doing a second generation memo to you in the next week or so on, on how that reorganization would work, both short-term and long-term.
Regan, I have one question. When you talked about bundling the trailers with the construction of the building, does that also include the improvements where the trailers will be located, or is that something we're going to do in advance, improvements to the site on Second Street, the site improvements?
I think I'd have to turn to Mr. Rando on that one.
The, the site improvements are minor, basically looking at a little bit of grading and putting a base course down on the lot. We could hold off on that and include that as part of the project, and the reason I would recommend doing that is because the utility connections, the sewer and the water lines are cut off at the street, so they would have to be extended to at least halfway up the lot to connect to the trailers, so that we'd have working bathrooms in the buildings temporarily. So, I would recommend taking the, the site as it is now, doing minimal improvements and including that in with the contractor. Plus, you don't get this. If we go through and we put in the sewer connection, the water connection, and we put it here, and the trailer gets delivered, and we need it over here, now we're looking at an extra to move it three feet. So, leaving it up to the contractor, he's responsible for it, and it's all on his back, or her back.
Thank you, Sal.
So, Mr. President, if, if we can get some indication from the board that this is the way we should proceed, that's what we'll do. And if not, back to the drawing board.
Does, does anybody object to that? I think the primary point of that was the centralized service window. That was something that we had kind of talked about before, but had never really made a decision on.
Well, Howard and I spent some extensive time reviewing what was just discussed by Regan, and I definitely think it's, it is a good thing to do for efficiency, productivity, and the best use of the space.
One question I have is with respect to using our existing staff as an example, right? If somebody comes into Village Hall today and has a question about their taxes, they go to the tax collector's office or the tax assessor's office, but here, now you're going to have a, for lack of a better term, a jack of all trades, somebody who may know both jobs, and how do we do that without increasing head count? You know, having additional people, because, you know, Ellen's sitting here, we can't split Ellen in two, she can't be in her office doing her thing and manning a window, and likewise for Ronkey, you know, to name people that do those roles.
Well, I think the, the experience in Milburn where they have done this is that they, they pulled it off and they reduced head count, because they had a support person in each office. And, and over time, they, they have reduced the number of people from eight to five. And the idea would be that there would be four or five people there, each of whom could do three things. do three things. And there would have to be coordination, and there will have to be some management of this staff. So if someone walked in, there would be at least one or two people there who had been trained to take tax payments, one or two people who had been trained to give out building permits or do an intake on building permits. The other advantage of it, I think, and it's admittedly an unknown, is that we're talking two, two-and-a-half years down the line. Over that period of time, I think the village should be looking at generically a 3-1-1 system, should be looking at the cross-training. I think the use of electronics for communication and support will only get better in that period of time. So people don't necessarily any longer need the secretary or the clerk right outside the door. That there may be no downside of the tax collector having one of her people here in this customer service area, even though she can't see that person. She's in a private office somewhere.
Well, there was further discussion there. There are a lot of initiatives that we'd like to initiate with the tax collector. One of the statistics that we have is that of the non-mortgage company payments of taxes, we only have a very small percentage of done online. That is the most time-consuming function that the tax collector does during the tax collection season. So we really need to get an initiative, get people to pay their taxes using our online system. The other is that the tax collector, like leaf collection or snowplowing, it has these peaks and valleys, and the common area will tend to level that requirement because you could distribute it across more people within that one group.
And the other thing that this model that we're discussing addressed that we thought was very important is to improve customer service to our residents, so that a resident, when they come in, if they have two or three different requests or needs for services from different departments, they don't have to go handle one task and then be told, well, you need to go now to the building, you know, across the street or around the corner, that they could be really well-served by coming to one spot. We also envision that regarding intake, that for those who come in for something and they need some additional information or forms or whatever, there could be a kiosk, you know, those who are computer literate can write then in there and take care of all their business. And for those who are not, then in this model, that all of that could be handled for them online. So if they're not computer literate or don't have those resources, it still will be online and save time, and that hub could handle those requests right online.
I'm basically okay with it. I would just say that, you know, before we sign off on anything, I would, once we hire a village administrator, a new village administrator, you should go over with him, especially in terms of the village organization.
No, we plan to do that without him.
Whoever this person may or may not be.
All right, it sounds like you have a green light there to continue moving in that Did you want to talk about IT staffing as well?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. As you know, we've been operating with a single staff member in the IT operation, which has historically been staffed by two people, and we have tried to use contract services, and it has been less than ideal. There's really work for two people. I think the trustees have probably seen it, just in terms of sometimes how long it takes to get things posted onto the website, to get changes in the website. There have been numerous occasions when, I can speak just from my own personal experience, when I wanted to get something done, and I would find out that Stan Wilkinson was doing something like getting the network and the police department working again, rather than whatever little thing I wanted to get done. And I think after making a valiant and valid effort to get things done with very part-time contract services in addition to Stan's work, I think the time has come to get back towards where we were. Now, what he has proposed as the acting IT manager is a little bit different than what he worked with previously. He has proposed that we look for a very part-time information, media technician, who would do what he is doing right now in the booth in the back of the room, that someone who would come in on an hourly basis, take care of the video on these meetings, on the planning board and the zoning board meetings, and just do that on an hourly basis, at a lower salary. And a second person, also part-time, although at probably 25 to 30 hours a week, who would be the new old Stan, who would be able to wire and troubleshoot some network issues, but especially deal with people about their own desktops and be kind of the-
A help desk.
The help desk. Freeing Stan up to do the next level up, which is the kind of thing that he's been jamming in among his other duties, for instance, arranging all of the IT that is going to be needed in connection with the move, on which he has had a good deal of help from Trustee Levinson. But he needs time to sit back and think. He needs time to figure where are we going from here, to talk with department heads about what are we going to do to improve services, to deal with the website. And so we're making a recommendation that these two part-time positions that you authorize us to recruit for those two part-time positions, and then after discussion with the village president, recommending that the acting be removed from Mr. Wilkinson's title, and that he be appointed as a deputy department head in the village to head the IT operation at a salary of about $59,300 a year.
Regan, one question. You started this off by saying that we had an issue with our contract arrangement. As I understand, we were sharing the contract that the school district was using to provide these IT support services. I don't remember the terms of that contract. Is there ongoing payment, or was that an hourly basis? In other words, did we pay an annual? So that's a-
No, it is not-
There's still ongoing costs for that?
It is not annual.
Transact?
It ended pretty much on the 31st of December.
So there's no tail cost? That's done? It's over? There's no other costs associated with that?
Other than any hours that they have actually spent in the month of January, we would have no expenses for-
I wasn't sure if we had like an annual contract that we had to pay for.
No tail.
Okay.
And because these positions are now tiered where they weren't before, is there a possibility that the costs of this will actually be less than what we were paying before when we had two full-time positions?
For the two part-time people, we would not have health benefit costs, for instance. We would have legally required pension payroll taxes, so on and so forth, but the overall cost will be less, yes.
So where there was one part-time salary and benefits, now there are two-
There was a full-time salary.
A full-time salary, sorry, and benefits. Now there are two part-time salaries without benefits.
Two full-time salaries.
There were, right, there were two full-time salaries. And now there's one full-time and two part-time. This sounds all okay, but could you-
And at this point, I will assume that Mr. Wilkinson will eventually get to the salary that Mauricio Gomez had, but at this point, he would be making less.
Could you get that to us, Regan, comparing apples to apples? Compare this new scenario that you're proposing. I know it's on the meeting, but just so we have it.
Sure.
What the scenario you're proposing versus the scenario we had a year ago when it was two full-time employees?
Sure.
An all-in, including benefits and everything?
You know, I don't have any real problem with it. The only comment I would make is that typically, and I think, well, better probably if we discussed an individual employee's position and title and potential title change in a closed session first, especially because it's going to involve performance stuff, may involve a wife's notice, but I just don't think that, you know, we can get into that part of the conversation in public, not that they see any problem with it or project anything, just as a matter of policy for the future. I don't think we should discuss these things. For the first time in a public meeting.
Regan, do you need anything from us other than the resolution that's on our consent agenda later this evening?
No, I don't think so.
Would it be fair to say that by passing that consent resolution, that particular one, that we're kind of consenting to this entire plan, as that's one piece of this? And is there an understanding-
I believe it's on us two resolutions, yes?
Twenty-nine and then thirty for separate actions.
I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page, that those are kind of part of this plan.
Yes.
I guess I would ask Trustee Levinson, we spend a lot of time in the finance and IT meetings, trying to get an IT plan, trying to figure out, you know, where we were on certain segments of the IT plan and so on and so forth. Does this have your imprimatur as a way, even if we're not, you know, planned out the way we want to be in terms of all the projects and so forth and where they stand? Does this have your imprimatur to staff that?
Yeah, I've been directly involved with the discussions and as well as part of the planning of some of the infrastructure components.
Why are we hiring two part-time people then? I realize why, you know, the nighttime might be a part-time, and I recognize Trustee Goldberg's desire not to increase headcount, but it seems like for the person described as doing things that are, you know, a little less heady, like wiring and so forth, it still seems like it's always better to have somebody available. And when I talk to the staff, and I don't mean the IT staff, I mean the other staff, they're always talking about how we could do so much better if we had a little higher standard for what we could be doing, not only in terms of serving the residents, but especially serving the staff and ourselves. So I'm just very concerned that, you know-
It fits into a lot of the-
It's not enough.
Well, it may be enough. It fits into the kinds of things that we would like to do as part of the strategic plan. There are things that we would like to standardize as what we call a standard build for the various workstations, so that somebody doesn't have to run out to the location to fix something. They could do it either remotely or right there at the help desk. There are applications that we would like a 3-1-1 system. We would like to build that would support more and more of the staff in total across the village. That information will flow, and we would have some service-level agreements that we would understand of how to respond to certain problems and certain issues. We have discussed looking at a particular 3-1-1-type product called GovPartner, which is used in Mayboard, as a helpful tool to move forward towards that direction.
How many hours would the part-time person, not the video?
Thirty.
Thirty hours?
Thirty max, yes.
I would suggest that this would be a good way to start, and I agree with Trustee Bauer that it's important to make sure that we have, invest in the resources so that we can really, really support our staff and better serve our residents. So it might be good just to start with this, and if we, you know, if over time we find that 30 hours is not adequate, we can always increase it.
The two other components, or another component which we haven't actually got into a discussion, and that's at the higher level, where we looked at either Rutgers or NJIT to help us in the launch, you know, from a project perspective of implementing a particular project or looking at a design for pieces of the infrastructure. We haven't had that discussion yet, but that's one of the steps that we need to take next.
Well, and hopefully that's something that someone in a management position in IT that maybe isn't kind of running around from computer to computer would have a little bit of time to think about those higher-level policies. And I think as the way that we've done with our kind of contractor consulting arrangement, that doesn't seem to be really meeting our needs, where we did it, we tried it for a couple of months, we looked back, and we said, this isn't really what we need, we're going to try something new. I think we should make a point to do the same thing in a couple of months after doing this, and, you know, making sure that if it isn't meeting our needs, that we are aware of that and that the IT department is aware of that, and we can change it again. Certainly doesn't set it in stone for the rest of our time. Regan, was that all that you wanted to cover with that issue?
Yes.
Okay. And do we want, we can move on to the interim village administrators' hours?
Yes, Mr. President, I just thought it would be good to kind of formalize some of the discussion from the last meeting, which focused on the completion of the salary study. So that's one element that I've got in there. And then we had discussed transition hours after the new administrator starts next Monday. And I've done that. Also, the budget meeting that is scheduled, or being scheduled for the eighth, putting in some transition time on that, so that the new administrator does not walk in to a ticking time bomb and be told, okay, you've got two weeks to get the budget ready. And so, sorry?
Certainly give him three.
After we pass the resolution.
So I just thought it would be a good idea to lay those things out for your approval.
Okay.
And, you know, it kind of puts a-
I think that was our original intention anyway.
Yeah. I think from the trustee's standpoint, you know, it puts a cap on it, and from my standpoint, you know, it lets me know that it's okay to be going ahead and doing this.
Everybody did get that memo that you sent out, correct?
Yes.
Were there any questions or objections about that?
I have none.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, our last discussion item before we get to our consent agenda is the special improvement district. We don't have this obviously listed tonight. I know I had a couple of questions, and I wanted to certainly open it up to the board for any questions before it's to be considered, to be listed for first reading at a subsequent meeting. But I know I had a couple of questions about this, and I circulated that to the two trustee members from the advisory committee, which is Trustee Rosner and Trustee Goldberg. And I've had a lot of conversations with business owners and some residents about some of the issues that were raised tonight and other issues, and I just want to make sure that there are some, some of those are addressed here. As I went back over my list of concerns and I went back over the final report from the advisory committee, I realized that a number of the questions that I had, going back through the report again, were actually answered in the report, which is really incredibly thorough. So there were a couple left, and one, I guess, is just a kind of general recap for some people that may not have gone to the workshops or may not have read the report, just about how outreach was done to the business community- was done to the business community, how the committee was formed, and that process. If either one of you maybe just want to speak to that just briefly.
You can do how the committee was.
Well, from my rec- I'm trying to remember the exact dates, but this is early 2011. This board created via resolution the establishment of a special improvement district advisory committee.
Would you like the resolutions? I have all three of them here.
Um, yeah, I put us the dates on there, sure.
I have all three ready for you.
All right, so to be specific, on January 10th, 2011, there was a resolution that created the special improvement district advisory committee that consisted of seven downtown business owners or property owners, two Main Street South Orange representatives, one South Orange Parking Authority representative, two Board of Trustees liaisons, and the South Orange Village Administrator. Then in, outreach was done a number of ways. I know I personally sent emails to a number of business owners and property owners that I knew, people, some that are sitting in this room that I knew were for and against the committee. I know Main Street sent out on their email distribution to everyone, and I think it may have even been advertised in Gaslight, I don't recall, but it was, it was put out there, and ultimately we got responses from nine business and property owners. And the seven that had properties that were in the anticipated district were appointed. It's really, it was really that simple. So some of the examples that were given earlier about committees of 18 members, you know, we would have loved to have that, had that level of participation. We just, we frankly didn't. And so since the resolution had called for seven, once we found seven qualified people from, that honestly, we didn't know where they stood on this, and we thought they represented a wide variety of opinions, came forth, the committee was formed. Sorry, the committee, members were appointed in March of 2011.
Excuse me, but that was vetted by the board itself. Those names were vetted by the board.
That's right. That's right. So that's, so that's the outreach, the timing of when the committee started. So the committee was, again, appointed in March of 2011. And then the first meeting occurred, as I recall, it was near the end of April of 2011, met for about, actually, the resolution originally called the committee to dissolve after three months. We originally, ultimately had a resolution to extend that by several months because the committee had further work to do. So we extended the committee, and then the last meeting was late summer sometime. And since that point, we've been having these discussions.
Every meeting was open to the public.
And there was one forum that was held at Sopac?
To Mark's point, every, every meeting was open to the public. And again, some of our, the folks that have spoken here regularly were in attendance at every meeting, spoke regularly and submitted questions in writing to the committee, which are, and every question that was submitted was responded to, and I believe is included in the report. There was one big public forum where an outreach was done with postcards to notify all business and property owners in the anticipated district, and I think it even went-
It was in July, I know July.
Right, July 20th, I remember, was the day of the forum held in Sopac. It was videotaped. The video still exists on the village website.
Actually, that's a good point. There is quite a bit of information, if people are curious for the report itself, the video of that meeting, you can go to southorange.org/downtown, and that's got probably a half a dozen links or so to different pieces of information that have been generated throughout this process. So again, you know, one of the, you know, I've kind of talked to people on both sides of this, and although there is a lot of excitement, because I think one of the things that a lot of people do in South Orange, whether they're residents or business owners, they compare South Orange Downtown to other downtowns in the area, like Montclair or Summit, or Livingston, or Melbourne, Morristown, places like that. And all of those places do have improvement districts. And some of that information was in the report about what, what other places have been looked at. And I know someone made a comment earlier about making sure to bring in experts, and we did actually. Not only were there experts at the public forum, this one of those people, Jeff Buhler, I don't know how many improvement districts he's been involved with, I mean dozens, also came to our last workshop and gave us a couple, actually, very valuable tips about what we can do to help get, potentially get more grants if we were to do this. Anyway, that was a long introduction to a question, that there, that even though some people are excited about it, there seems to be some concerns that Main Street does such a good job right now with some of the activities that they do. How are we going to make sure that those activities continue? You know, is there going to be a group of people that transitions between, you know, some of the activities that are done now versus what would potentially be a new structure? You know, what would that look like?
We would hope that there would be a transition put together where people from Main Street would continue to, to work, at least with the initial formation, if there's a formation of a CIB, and continue forth. And some people who are volunteering now would volunteer to work with the CIB.
Just anecdotally, I mean, is there interest from people currently to continue on?
Yeah, Main Street themselves has come out in favor of CIB and would like to, and many of them have said to me, they'd like to continue to work with the downtown. Some of these activities that go on now have been an evolving process. You know, farmers markets celebrate South Orange Downtown after sundown. Some of these activities will continue, maybe all of them will continue, many things will change. There'll always be an evolution on how these things work. But the hope is always to have a, to have volunteers actively working with the CIB committee and Main Street, you know, as the DM CIB.
Okay. One concern that I've heard a number of times is kind of, is about the budget of the proposed improvement district board, and that there are, I guess, some who believe that this is some way for the village to get out of its 2% tax, property tax cap limitations, which I'll make one quick point, that our in-cap increases this year were actually negative 1%. So we're not at the 2% limit to begin with for our in-cap expenses.
The-
Are you, no bad, is negative-
1.4, 1.5?
Negative 1.4, okay.
Okay. The, this budget, which, you know, which the CIB committee put forth a fairly modest budget, also includes a contribution of the services that we spend already on the downtown, which the CFO estimated to be very close to $100,000, and that the, that $100,000 would be given to the CIB to reproduce those services, hopefully at a lower premium price. If they can do those services for $70,000, because usually people claim they can do anything more efficiently than government, and that extra money would go towards other services in the CIB. Plus, we have a service level agreement right now with Main Street, which we would transfer over to the-
CIB.
To the CIB, which is right now about $50,000. There's a couple of other contributions that we make, including money from the funds program, money from the, for the downtown after sundown, which we try and recover through sponsorships, but have not covered all the money from it, I don't think. And so those would be some of the things, and we, that covers a substantial portion of the proposed CIB budget. In fact, it's, even the full-blown CIB budget that they proposed in there, this is well over 50%. And then the CIB board themselves, we would work in their own budget, which comprises of a majority of business and property owners on that CIB board. They would come with their own budget, and they would bring it to the Board of Trustees, which would have to approve it. So it's up to the CIB board, the business owners and property owners themselves, and this board to make sure that we keep things in check and that things don't get out of hand. And I think the biggest thing that we all worry about is, what the former village president alluded to, is becoming a, an employer, a labor-intensive organization, when that's not what the goal is. And there is a sunset clause, of course, where the whole thing could just shut down if we felt it was getting out of hand, or if future boards felt it was getting out of hand.
But is there a stat- there's a statutory limitation-
The statutory limit is 4% of the assessed property values.
Okay. But the, the improvement district board would not only have to vote on the budget in a public meeting with their board, they would have to get approval from this board as well?
Right.
Correct.
And our board, and our meeting obviously being in the public. And I imagine that the CBAC will want to review the budget. I imagine we'll discuss a recap, we'll get a budget workshop, similar to what would be done in the past.
I think there was another question that maybe, and I had a conversation with Steve, part of the budgeting process, and that's if the CIB had taken out a loan and the CIB expired, what the responsibilities would be to the village?
Well, a loan, the amortization of that loan would have to be covered by a special assessment, which actually, all of these are, these are not taxes. There's a decision, court decision that is held that these are not taxes, they're special assessments, and there would in fact be a special assessment specifically to amortize any debt that's incurred by the corporation, the CIB corporation, which debt has to be approved in advance by this board as well. So that there's, there's checks and there's means to assure that the debt incurred will be fully amortized.
And part of their budget would be for the paying down of the principal and interest of that loan.
Of course.
Which, even to get the loan in the first place, they would have to go through that same budgeting process?
Yes.
Right? They wouldn't be able to take out a loan that we were somehow unaware of.
Yep.
All right.
Right.
I also want to add, you know, one of the issues with Main Street and with any downtown organization has been, and two of the people, speakers themselves pointed out, is the issue of funding. And, you know, when you, when you lie in volunteer fundraising or volunteer donations, it's always an up and down thing, you know. Good years they do it, but, you know, when you want the downtown to maintain a consistency and have a budget, you need to have consistent money being spent in the same way, shape, or form. And this is one of the issues that were discussed in several, in the prior CIB discussions. I think one was in 2004, when it was argued that if people donated more money to Main Street or consistently donated, business owners, then, then we wouldn't have a discussion about a CIB. But it did not happen that way, for whatever reason, you know, and dissatisfaction with the makeup of Main Street or dissatisfaction with whatever, where they didn't have the money. But this would promise some of that consistency that we're looking for in having a Main Street and CIB organization in the downtown.
Mark, to drive that point home, I think this is really important. I think it's Mr. Cabrera that's raised the point that, you know, business owners will step up, and that's fantastic. The problem is that the numbers just, you know, haven't shown it. I have the numbers from Main Street shared with me as to where the source of their contributions. So the largest contributor to Main Street currently is the village. We give $50,000. Next largest is from residents. Our resident support is $14,230, and this is last year, 2011. Seton Hall-
Let's just short it.
Gives $9,800. And then last but not least are business and property owners. Property owners gave $2,000, and business owners gave $2,500, $2,525, $2,525. So, you know, the numbers just don't support that the merchants are, you know, are supporting the endeavor, and that's, you know, that's absolutely a big factor here, is having, having consistency of funding.
It also levels the playing field, because those business owners or property owners who have been making contributions, they've been supporting the organization, whereas the ones who don't. And yet, everybody in the downtown benefits from it. So it makes it fairer, and hopefully the, that by doing this and spreading the contributions among the group of people, you keep this as low as possible, which is really the intent of it, and why the village is so, you know, wants to keep giving that $150,000-plus dollars to the CIB to make sure that contribution stays level.
Yeah, I just want to add that, that's a point that I've, for some reason, only more recently realized the significance of, that currently there are biz, there are many business owners who do support even Main Street or do their own things, you know, outside of an organizational structure like that. And then there are those who don't. You know, there are property owners and business owners who don't contribute anything to the downtown, who maybe, you know, even as far as trying to bring in new businesses to their storefronts. And there are some that really do quite a bit. But right now, the people who do a lot seem to be holding the weight for those who don't do anything. And it's almost kind of like a really quintessential tragedy of the commons, where everybody's reaping the reward, but the payments are voluntary. So there are people who are, do-gooders is the wrong word, but are willing to give even though they're not going to receive anything more individually. And there are those who are, I guess, kind of the free riders or freeloaders who are willing to be part of the downtown but not necessarily contribute when they do reap the benefits. And just over the past couple of weeks, discussing this with people, that was just a fact that seemed to come out more than not, that there were really were kind of these two groups of merchants downtown, and that right now the burden is on the backs of the people who do the most, which really isn't fair.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Nope.
A few other points I just wanted to bring up that I think are relevant to this discussion, that, again, sort of these frequently asked questions that we deal with a lot. Again, we've all heard many, many times that 74% of businesses don't want it. I just really want to be clear here, that there was a survey that the CIB advisory committee put out, and it asked a whole host of questions, and the entire survey is found within the appendix of the report put out by the committee. The only thing, closest thing I could think of that they're referring to, there's a question, and it says, quote, "Would you be willing to pay additional money to get better quality service for any of the items listed above?" And listed above was, you know, types of services. That had a 74% value, that 74% didn't want to pay more. But then if you read the survey, it says a whole host of things. Almost a similar number of respondents, you know, admit there's a problem, they're admit they need more of this, they need more cleanliness, they need more recruiting. There was a whole, if you read the report, it's very in-depth about the complaints and issues, and, you know, we all have issues and things we'd like to see resolved. So there was a whole host of issues, and I think it's, so that number has been totally distorted as to, and taken out of context. So that's worth noting. Another question I get frequently is, well, the tax-abated properties aren't going to participate in this, properties that have a pilot. And that is not the case. Even properties, whether they have a pilot or tax abatement or not, are part of this. So the CIB assessment is not based on their taxes, it's based on their property assessment. And counsel, please correct me if I'm misstating that.
Those have been included in the exhibits.
Right. So properties that have a pilot and a different arrangement with the village are treated just like any, every other property for the purposes of the special improvement district. Just one more point I wanted to make, speaking of the exhibit counselor just, counsel just mentioned, so in the ordinance that I believe we'll be discussing at our next meeting, is an exhibit that shows proposed assessments for all of the properties in the proposed district. And again, to put this in context, for all of the people clamoring that it's, you know, it's a bad economy and times are tough, you know, we all, I understand that. But I want to give specific numbers. I did an average, the average assessment for all businesses in the, in the district will be $409 a year, and that's an average. And again, that factors in the bigger properties that, like 76 South, 76 South Orange Avenue, that's one of the biggest properties downtown. If you do the median to sort of take out those extremities, the median is $238 a year in the first year. And yes, that does go up over time, as the five-year budget shows in the, in the ordinance and at the committee. But even at the upper end of this, the average is $1,300 a year, so roughly $100 a month, or the median of $813 a year. So again, much less than $100 per month is what we're talking about. So just to put it in perspective.
It hits those numbers if the CIB board decides they want to go with those increases. They may decide to stay-
Sure. That's totally up to the discretion of the CIB board, right? I just, again, wanted to put in perspective, because people are, I'm hearing rumors, "Oh, it's going to cost me $10,000, it's going to cost me $20,000, it's going to cost me," you know, the numbers keep going up and up and up. And I just wanted to, you know, talk about the real numbers.
Are there any other questions or comments from any board members? There'll obviously be opportunity for the board and the public to comment at a, at a first reading of this ordinance. The ordinance would be listed for first reading likely the next meeting, which is the 15th of February. There'll be a public comment period in that meeting, just like every meeting. We've got a number of resolutions on our consent agenda this evening. If the village clerk would like to read through them?
Yes, thank you. We have a resolution revising meeting times for the 2012 annual meeting schedule of the Board of Trustees. A resolution authorizing the installation of temporary traffic control devices on Garfield Place at the intersection of Prospect Street. This is in the amount not to exceed $1,500. A resolution authorizing-
$15,000.
$2,000. Oh, $15,000, I'm sorry. A resolution authorizing a joint bid with and among the township of South Orange Village, the township of Maplewood, and the South Orange Maplewood School District for the mowing of large turf areas for calendar year 2012. of large turf areas for calendar year 2012. A resolution awarding a competitive contract to Margonis Electrical Contracting Company for the emergency generator replacement at his headquarters in the amount of $251,400. A resolution hiring a per diem dispatcher in the South Orange Department of Public Safety Police Force. A resolution hiring a permanent crossing guard in the South Orange Department of Public Safety Police Force. A resolution hiring teachers for the 2012 winter cultural arts educational program classes in the South Orange Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs. A resolution authorizing the placement of a lien on private property for special cleanup services performed at 215 North Wyoming Avenue in the amount of $1,553.66. A resolution authorizing the placement of a lien on private property for special cleanup services performed at 215 North Wyoming Avenue in the amount of $576.22. Resolution authorizing a raffle license application number 1215 to Maryland Academy of the Oranges Academy. A resolution approving raffle license application number 1216 to Maryland of the Oranges Academy. We had one resolution removed from the consent agenda, another under special or separate action. We have Resolution 2012-029. This is the resolution authorizing the Village Administrator to recruit part-time information technology staff in the South Orange Department of Administration, Revenue, and Finance. Resolution 30 was removed from the consent agenda and is included under the resolution requiring separate action. Resolution 31 is a resolution authorizing the Interim Administrator to aid in the transition of the newly appointed Village Administrator. A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Tri-State Transportation Campaign's Transit Center Development Grant Program for a TDR study in the amount of $50,000. Resolution rejecting all bids for the 2012 plumbing services contract. And finally, we have a resolution authorizing an executive session at the end of tonight's meeting with the Board of Trustees.
And there were two items listed to that, one more that I'd like to add. One was contract negotiation with community service provider, contract for administrative services, and I'd like to add a threat of litigation.
And can you also, there were a couple items that we were supposed to get written reports that we didn't, so we could add those as well?
Could we just...
Specifically, East Orange Water.
Could we just get the written reports for those? If they were to be written reports, I'm not sure we need to add them for discussion items?
But we didn't get them, right? We were supposed to get them in advance for the meeting.
But if we didn't get them, then they couldn't probably be provided tonight. I think that's something that, if people are okay with, if the written report came in tomorrow, I'm just not sure there's a need to add it as a discussion item.
If you could just add at least East Orange Water to that, to that list, because there have been...
Certainly, if there's something that needs to be discussed, we should do so, but we certainly should not be adding items that only need an update. So we now have four items, including East Orange Water.
Alex, I was going to add the SOPAC report to new business unless you were putting an executive session.
Has that, that report hasn't yet, Lenharx Report from SOPAC? I don't believe that's been released publicly at this time.
I don't, I don't think we release reports publicly until the Board passes a resolution except than usually, but I don't know if it's my fault.
So we can add that for our executive session, unless there's any objection?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so that's the executive session agenda component. Were there any questions about others?
I'd just like to make a comment to number 19, that that contract is covered by a grant.
This one, I'm sorry?
Covered by a grant.
Please generate.
I like that.
How much is the grant for?
I like, is Sal, Sal?
Does the grant cover the police generator in full?
Yes. Is 325?
247.
247.
Oh, wow, that's great. That's awesome.
Thanks.
On item 32, can just give an explanation because I don't, I just need a little additional detail on 32.
This is a planning study where we would be asking for information to do the underlying planning necessary to do a transfer of development rights ordinance. It doesn't commit you to doing the ordinance, but it does the underlying planning work that's required by the statute.
Is there a match to this grant from yet put up?
There's no match on the Tri-State one. We're going to combine that with the Anject grant, which is considerably smaller, like $10,000, and that has a 50/50 match.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one question on 21, hiring a permanent crossing guard. Is that a replacement for an existing, it's not an increase, right? That's a replacement?
It's a replacement.
Replacement. Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I move.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We have two resolutions requiring separate action tonight. If you could have the title of the first one, please.
Thank you. Resolution 2012-028 is a resolution authorizing the appointment of a Village Administrator.
Thank you. This is a process, we've given some updates in, I think, all of our board meetings, where we have formed a search committee that included three trustees, myself, Village Clerk, and Village Counsel, with the assistance of a search firm. I am...
And other trustees?
And the other, and all of the trustees who have interviewed our finalists. We're now tonight asking, or I guess I'm asking the board to pass this resolution to confirm this appointment. I don't know if there's any discussion items or questions that any board members have.
I do. And I'll be quick and...
And the question can't be, is Mr. Lewis willing to stay at this point? It's too late.
No, no, I just wanted to just take just a quick minute to just share with residents that we really, really did a thorough, thorough process in identifying the candidate. Real quick, we solicited resumes for this position. We received about 50 resumes, and then the selection committee reviewed and vetted the resumes and along with the consultant. And the consultant who was involved in this did an awesome job, and I forgot the name of the consulting firm.
Greg.
Greg is all I know, remember?
Greg Fairback.
Pardon me?
Greg.
GMR.
Right.
GMA.
Awesome, awesome facilitator through this process, and with his assistance, we were able to identify 11 individuals we thought had the qualifications to meet the needs and expectations to serve the residents in the Village well. We interviewed, of those 11, we interviewed, the whole board interviewed on a Saturday, six of those candidates, and from that group, we narrowed it down to four finalists, and they were all qualified for the job, so it was a matter of fit or who had something in the other area. And we had the real, real problem of then having so, those great options of who we're going to choose who's a good fit. We had, then we narrowed it down to two finalists, and we had an additional informal meeting, again with the whole board, and as a result, we, the wonderful thing is that the person that's going to come before us today appears to have been a consensus of the board. So it was a wonderful process, it was transparent, it was arduous, and I'm really, really proud of the work of the board for this selection.
I think we actually beat our schedule, too.
Yes, we did.
Hopefully, that won't set a precedent.
I would like to request a voice vote on that resolution.
Pardon me?
I would like to request a voice vote.
As opposed to a roll call vote?
Yeah. No, no, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
That makes much more sense.
Just to add and echo Deborah's comments, I want to thank, obviously, the committee that vetted the initial candidates and gave the rest of us just the cream of the crop. We did, all of us, interview the finalists, and again, Barry Lewis stood head and shoulders above everyone, and we're very excited to have him be willing to join us. Obviously, we want to thank John Gross, his predecessor and his immediate predecessor, Regan Burkholder, for serving his interim over the past couple of months. Barry's got some shoes to fill, but based on his credentials and what we've learned and how we gotten to know him, I think he's going to do a fantastic job, and we're all looking forward to working with him.
In that spirit, is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second. Who moved?
I will.
Okay. Second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Kidding. Yeah, just kidding, yes.
Trustee Gould?
An enthusiastic yes.
Trustee Levitson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So Resolution 212-028 did pass, and we do have a new Village Administrator.
Ray, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself to everyone?
Initially, thank you, Village President and all the trustees. It's an honor.
Excuse me, say your name for the record, please.
It's an honor to accept the position, and I thank you for the trust and the confidence and all the kind words tonight.
You've got to turn this mouth.
I think I realized going into the process that you, like every municipality in New Jersey, has many challenges in front of you. I got a firsthand exposure to a number of them tonight, but I'm still here and I'm enthusiastic, and I'm looking forward to it. I had the opportunity to meet a number of the department heads and key staff members. Mr. Burkholder was kind enough to introduce me tonight. Obviously, I look forward to working with them, getting to know them better, seeing what we can do to make South Orange a better place than it already is, and again, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the applause. I think it's the last time an administrator will get applause at this meeting, but good to have you, Barry.
We have one more resolution for separate action tonight.
Yes, this is Resolution 2012-30. This is the resolution appointing Stanley Wilkinson to the position of IT Manager in the Department of Administration, Revenue, and Finance.
Great.
Discussion?
Are there any questions or discussion?
Yay! I second. Howie, I was going to move.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you.
Do you hesitate?
Trustee Bauer?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Goldberg?
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Gould?
Yes.
Trustee Levitson?
Yes.
And Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Stan.
Congratulations, Stan.
Congratulations, Stan.
Stan the man.
If Stan came up to say a few words, the meeting would end online for those people watching online and on TV, so we'll do that introduction maybe another day. I think everybody here knows Stan well enough, and we're all very excited to have him on this position as well. Bills list?
Yeah, I forgot about the bills list. Let's not pay it this year. Yeah. List of bills audited by the Village Treasurer dated December 31, 2011, had been, had been provided to each member of the board, and I move that the bills list be approved and paid.
Is there a second?
There was one item.
I second.
I sent an email to the CFO with an inquiry on one item, and he never responded as to what it was.
Which was the item?
Item 439475.
It was for a uniform.
What?
It was for rescue squad uniform.
Winter clothing?
Yeah, it's an OEM, OEM, I guess, weather rain supplies so that I can have some sort of identification as OEM coordinator during an emergency. It says Township of South Orange Village, OEM, so if it's raining out and I knock on somebody's door, it's not who's this person, it's this person is the OEM coordinator.
I'd like to suggest maybe with OEM being a new position with Alex, that perhaps we put it in the budget so that we have a sense of what, you know, this small budget is in the budget?
This is all, yeah, this is all part of a very small OEM budget, maybe $990. I think there were a whole bunch of departments that were $1,000 and things were cut by 10%. So that's all, that's all.
It's in there, okay, that's good.
Was there a second?
Yeah, I second.
All in favor?
I.
Janine, did you have a question?
On the bills?
Yeah.
No, I was seconding those.
Oh.
All in favor again?
You have to, just bow down and second.
Any opposed? Thank you. And before we have a quick motion for adjournment, I do want to, I know the Interim Administrator wanted an opportunity to say a few words tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of my colleague Greg Fairback. He said he was sorry he couldn't be here this evening. He had a prior commitment elsewhere, the meeting he had to attend, but he wanted me to extend his thanks to you for a tight, focused search. I know from working with him previously, he's had ones that took a lot longer. And he said he felt it went, it went very well with your avid participation, and he thanks you for that. And I, too, would like to say thank you. I'd like to say thank you to the Village's really excellent staff for being so cooperative and for the work they've done and putting up with my newness here over the last few months. And finally, just like to thank you for the opportunity to serve. It's, it's been a fun four months, most of the time, and I have enjoyed it. I hope we have accomplished some things together, and I look forward to lounging back into retirement over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think he means lunging into retirement from here.
And Regan, you were a real, real pleasure, and you're not disappearing overnight. You're going to be around for a little bit longer to assist us in some other things in the transition, but thank you for being you. You really made this transition or this period of change, and change is always difficult, and you've made this somewhat bearable, and thank you.
Yes, thank you, Regan.
Thanks.
It's been my pleasure, really has.
I move to a John.
Before we adjourn, can I get one more question out of Regan? And this is new old business, everyone's favorite topic, next G. I have a question for you, too.
Yes.
I know you can't predict what next G is going to be doing next, but if they were to go to the BPU, would the Village be notified or just the individual property owners?
Well, I'm not certain.
Mike, Mike.
I'm not certain. At present, there, and without getting into some details that should be confidential, their claim for relief was against another utility. It was interesting that they restricted their claim for relief only against PSE and G. So for that reason, I'm not sure if they pursue that avenue of relief, whether we would get notice. You have to realize that the way the easements run, the Village has no interest in those easements other than in the generalized interest in terms of addressing the interests of the residents in town, but the Village has no property interest in any of this, so there would really be very little reason why we would get notice if they were simply pursuing the same remedy against another utility. But I'm not certain. I mean, we could, we certainly could intervene if we got notice, and I'm certain that PSE and G would let us know if that happened, and we could at that point take action to intervene on behalf of ourselves, the Village, and other interested parties.
Is there a contact at the BPU that the residents could go to? Because when you go to the BPU now, you have to go online, you fill out a form, and it goes into who knows where. Is there anyone that they can contact that we know who might be helpful in getting us through the process if they do go to them?
Well, I would be reluctant to have everybody calling the BPU before that becomes an issue. I don't think, personally, that's not, that's not an issue, and... I don't think, personally, that's not, that's not an issue, and if you read the closing line in the brief that was submitted, you'll see that they're telegraphing that they're not going there, that they're coming back to us, they're going to be looking to put those facilities along the public right of way.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's at least what they've stated in their, in their post-hierarchic brief.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
I already did that, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.